Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for Monday, November 14, 2022. It is 6 o'clock and we will start this meeting. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during general public comment period may provide the Planning Board with oral communication on any matter concerning city business. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the public hearing, public comment period. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by making an in-person comment, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff. If you would like to participate in the public comment period by phone, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Will everyone please stand for our invocation followed by the flag salute? My invocation tonight will be something of inspirational. Tomorrow, we will have lost Officer Matt Pavelka 19 years ago, who died in the line of duty here in the city of Burbank. May God rest his soul. We will close tonight's meeting in Officer Pavelka's name. Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get the roll call, please?
Board Member Wick?
Present.
Board Member Elric?
Here.
Chairman Rosati?
I am here.
Vice Chair Ottenian?
And Board Member Monaco? I'll let the record show, Board Member Monaco and Vice Chair Ottenian are absent.
Thank you. Do we have announcements for staff?
No announcements.
Okay, there are, I'm just gonna start off real quick by congratulating Board Member Wick for joining our team. It's nice having you here this evening and we look forward to lively debate and conversation. There are two public hearings on tonight's agenda. We will move to item number one. Now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 210000841, a request for a conditional use permit allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine onsite or offsite for onsite and offsite consumption at the existing Life Rooted Restaurant at 2202 North Glen Oaks Boulevard. Before we begin, do any Planning Board members have any legal, financial, or any other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
I do not.
No. Have any Planning Board members had any communications, including written or oral with the applicant, the applicant's representative, or any other person?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Those have been provided to the board in written copies on your dies.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Board. My name is Daniel Villa, a senior planner with the City of Burbank Community Development Department. This evening, I'll be presenting on a project located at 2202 North Glen Oaks Boulevard. May I please have the presentation on the screen? Thank you. Let me make sure this is working properly. There it is. Perfect. The project site is located again at 2202 North Glen Oaks Boulevard. It is located north of Interstate 5 and west of McCambridge Park, on the northwest corner of Irving Drive and Glen Oaks Boulevard. The product site is currently improved with three connected commercial buildings that total approximately 31,000 square feet. There are a total of seven tenants on the property. They all generally operate neighborhood-serving uses such as offices, retail, alandromat, and restaurants. The Life Rooted Restaurant, the tenant that has applied for the application we are discussing tonight, is one of the existing seven tenants. The property is also improved with a parking lot, a surface parking lot, that has 26 parking spaces. The product site is Zone C2 Commercial Limited Business and has a general plan designation of corridor commercial. A land use designation intended to provide small pockets of neighborhood-serving uses that allow residents the opportunity of walking from nearby residential neighborhoods to meet some of their daily needs. Additionally, the product site is surrounded by single-family residential to the south and west and also commercial buildings to the north and east. Let's quickly go over some background regarding the Life Rooted Restaurant. The restaurant has been in operation since, or has been operational at 2202 North Glen Oaks Boulevard since January 2020. They provide both takeout and sit-down restaurant services. Over the past two years, the business has operated Wednesday to Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Friday to Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. In the summer of this year, the business temporarily closed down as they are looking to revamp their operations to include a new menu as well as COVID-conscious practices. One thing to highlight is that dating back to January 2020, since the restaurant began operations, the city has not received any noise or operational complaints related to the business. This is an image of the existing site plan. Again, the property is improved with existing commercial buildings and a service parking lot. The tenant space for Life Rooted Restaurant is highlighted with a red line fronting Glen Oaks Boulevard. Another thing I'd like to highlight is that over the last year and a half, the restaurant operated with a temporary outdoor seating area that was located within the parking lot. The area of the outdoor seating is identified with a red box. The outdoor seating was permitted as part of the city's outdoor dining and private parking areas urgency ordinance, which was approved by the city council with the intent of providing restaurants relief and expanded outdoor dining options in response to the COVID pandemic. The Life Rooted Restaurant plans to remove the temporary outdoor dining area. As part of this project, the area would be reverted back to parking. So what is the project? The applicant is requesting Planning Board approval of a conditional use permit, or ECUP, also known as a CUP, to allow for the onsite and offsite consumption of beer and wine in conjunction with the existing restaurant. The restaurant would operate as it has been since January 2022, with the exception that there would be some updates to the hours of operation. We will discuss these updates in the next slide. Planning Board approval of the conditional use permit would give the applicant the opportunity of applying for an alcohol license with the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, also known as ABC. ABC is an agency of the government of the state of California charged with regulation of alcoholic beverages. So hours of operation. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting to update the hours of operation. Please note that the staff report prepared for this item incorrectly stated that the hours of operation would remain the same. Included in this slide are the revised and requested hours of operation. The applicant is requesting to operate Monday to Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Saturdays to Sundays, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Outdoor dining would be limited to no earlier than 9:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m. On the screen are other operational characteristics that the business would be subject to in order to ensure compatibility with the surrounding uses. Some of these include that at least 65% of the gross sales revenue of the establishment must be from food sales. In essence, it would have to remain primarily a restaurant. Alcohol sales would only occur during the same business hours as food is sold. And also, there is no dancing at the establishment. Additionally, no open alcoholic beverages would be allowed to leave the premises, and the applicant would be required to provide employee training in alcoholic beverage compliance, crime prevention techniques, and the handling of violence. In addition to these, there are other operational conditions of approval included as part of Exhibit A, the attached resolution to the staff report. This is an image of the restaurant's existing floor plan. It would remain the same. No changes are proposed. Both indoor and outdoor seating are provided. Outdoor seating would be limited to seating along the walkway adjacent to the tenant space and on private property. On the screen, the outdoor seating is located towards the bottom of the screen, the blue strip closest to the bottom. As part of staff's review of the conditional use permit, the product was reviewed for consistency with the Burbank 2035 General Plan, the applicable zoning regulations, and also the required findings for a conditional use permit. As identified in staff's report and also the associated attachments, it is staff's assessment that with the associated conditions of approval, the product complies with all applicable requirements. As previously mentioned, the staff report prepared for this item incorrectly stated that the hours of operation would remain the same. Included in this slide are the revised and requested hours of operation. These have been discussed in a previous slide. Staff requests that the Planning Board approve an amendment to condition of approval, to condition of approval number 12, to include that these revised hours of operation, as was the limits to the hours of outdoor dining, be included as part of the resolution. It's outlined in staff's report and this presentation, it is staff's assessment that with the associated conditions of approval, the product complies with all applicable requirements. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Board approve the project with the reference amendment to condition of approval number 12. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available should there be any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. I will now invite the applicant or their representative to address the Planning Board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Hello, Council. I'd like to start off by saying thank you for your time this evening. I would also like to thank the staff at the Planning Department for their work on the application. My name is Jake Lee, and I am an associate for SC Planners, and I am representing the restaurant owner for this conditional use permit. Life Rooted is a family-oriented neighborhood restaurant that was started right before the onset of the COVID pandemic in December of 2019. Life Rooted specializes in artisan pizza, but also offers sandwiches, delicious appetizers, fresh salads, and refreshing drinks. Life Rooted provides a relaxing atmosphere for local friends and family to enjoy delicious foods with both indoor and outdoor seating. To stay competitive, the owner is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for onsite sales of alcoholic beverages. Life Rooted is updating their menu selection and would like to offer beer and wine to complement their delicious pizza and pasta. Life Rooted is prepared to be fully compliant with all the conditions set forth by the Planning Department in order to preserve the peace and comfort of the surrounding community. We'd also like to add that the outdoor dining for the COVID has been removed as of a few weeks ago. And at that, I would like to thank you again for your time and allow the restaurant owner, Peter Gonzalez, to address you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much. I want to thank you guys all for your time and to the planning staff. The city's been helpful through this process. I am the owner, Peter Gonzalez of Life Rooted. We're a small, family-owned restaurant, just helping with the neighborhood. We try to be a little neighborhood spot, and we'd love to be able to serve wine with our pizza and pasta. So we're fully compliant with all, any kind of conditions that set forth that they've set forth for us. We comply with that. So I'd appreciate if we can, if there are any questions or anything, I'll be available.
Perfect. Thank you for coming. We will now open up the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the Planning Division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public who wish to call in, please call 818-238-3335 to address the Planning Board. Callers will be placed in the queue until all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take the first few callers. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer and take your phone off speaker when delivering your comment. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers here tonight or any callers for comment?
I believe we do have some callers on the line.
Okay. This is just for specifically this... Joel, come on up.
What a treat, you know my name. I'm here for the deal on Alameda. I just want to throw in my two cents. Look, I've been to Italy...
Wait, wait, wait. What deal on Alameda?
I'm here for the next hearing on Alameda.
Okay.
But I want to talk on this one, too.
Okay.
That's all. Just a few seconds. You know, I've been to Italy, and Italian food and wine kind of go together. So please grant these folks so they're not at a disadvantage, so they can, people can enjoy a glass of wine. And please remove that dancing restriction, because sometimes folks like to dance. Not the employees, but the customers. Maybe they want to have a little Italian night and dance. You know, why should they be restricted to that? And why should you restrict, you know, the locals? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your public comment. Do we have anyone else who's here for this hearing? Anyone on the phone lines who want to speak on this matter?
There are no callers in the queue.
There are no callers. Great. There being no further public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments on why there's no dancing?
Chair, if you just give me a second, I just want to confirm whether or not in the code it explicitly prohibits dancing. If it does, it would be part of having a restaurant with incidental alcohol that would prohibit the dancing. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So the code explicitly defines restaurant with incidental alcohol, which is what this uses, and it does explicitly prohibit dancing as part of the definition. So because of that, unless the board went through the process of approving some sort of variance or deviation, that would be prohibited, and the applicant is not proposing that type of application at this point.
So my understanding is we don't want it to turn into a Black Angus, dancing alcohol in a restaurant. It's just a restaurant with beer and wine.
That is correct. It's a restaurant with beer and wine.
But if a couple got up to do a little dance for their, maybe their anniversary, no one's going to lock them up, right?
That is correct. Yeah.
Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You'll have a maximum time of 10 minutes.
At this time, we have no further comment.
Okay. Thank you. I now declare the public hearing closed, and the Planning Board will now deliberate. Does the board have any questions for the applicant or staff? Go ahead, Mr. Elrick.
Just have a question about your outdoor seating. So it's completely gone. There won't be any alcohol served outside whatsoever?
Board Member, if I could begin and then the applicant can add. So there are two different outdoor seating areas that we were talking about or that we had as part of the presentation. The first of those is the temporary COVID outdoor seating area. That area took up parking spots. The city allowed it because we have an urgency ordinance in place that allows for displacement of parking in order to accommodate expanded seating areas given the COVID pandemic. That area is going away. Separate from that, there is a second outdoor seating area that is rather small, and it is running adjacent to one of the walls of the building. I believe it maybe accommodates for about five to six people, and it is within a walkway on private property. So that would remain.
Okay.
And there would be alcohol served within that private property outdoor seating area.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Wick?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions. First of all, is there any likelihood of having special events at the restaurant, weddings, anniversary parties, as you mentioned, that type of thing?
I'll let the owner address that question. Yes, we do plan to have, we've had some types of parties, but very similar to what you would have, like Denny's or something like that where you're gonna... We have had ones where we shut down the restaurant for a private party, but not weddings. It's not really a party event. Yeah. Anything would stay within the occupant limits that are set forth in our seating. So I wouldn't go anything more than that.
Got it. Thank you. And then is there any, because I noticed that the hours of operation are, especially on Saturday and Sunday, they're early in the morning, and sometimes people may want to sleep in. Is there any chance of doing any kind of outdoor TVs or anything for games or is this specifically for brunch?
No, no, no. Yeah, no. Just, we are, I have plans on doing brunch. That's been asked, like, my customers are telling me, "Open up for brunch." So that was one of the things that we will, we just won't do seating after 9 o'clock. So as stated in our conditions, so, yeah.
Got it. And this is strictly beer and wine, correct? Is it beer and wine just sold in bottles, or is there any plans to add taps or anything like that?
I haven't looked into that, possibly. The negotiation with the different beer vendors, and so sometimes they do give you deals on the tap.
That's all I have for now.
Being Board Member Rosati, I would agree with the gentleman that wine and pasta kind of go together. So just make us feel comfortable about your knowledge and your experience with alcohol in the restaurant business. Employees, training, have you had training? Have you done this before?
Yeah, well, I've worked in, I've owned several businesses. This is my first venture into the restaurant business, but I have, through school, put myself waiting tables, and so I'm familiar with bars and serving beer and wine and the different protocols. But we will, we have, as part of our training, on training, we're going to have a full-blown where I'll teach all my employees exactly how to handle any rudely customers or also just the basics on serving.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Thank you. Seeing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. The board will deliberate. Please let me know what your pleasure is. Board Member Wick?
No, I feel after, initially during the public comment period or the presentation, I was a little concerned with the reduced operating hours. That definitely came as a little bit of a shock, given the staff report we were given. But I've, and I've personally been to Life Rooted before, not, I'm not like a frequent class customer, but I ordered from there during the pandemic, and I feel, I feel comfortable with the restrictions given in place. I mean, dancing would be great, but I'm not about to, you know, try and create different variances for dancing unless it's the board's pleasure.
Okay. Mr. Elrick?
I don't have any comment. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So I would concur with staff's assessment. If somebody wants to make the appropriate motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion. Let me see.
Chair, if I may, before the motions made, just want to, if there is a motion and you agree to allow the hours to be bumped up?
We have to include that in the motion.
We need to include it in the motion that it's going to be part of the amended conditions of approval.
The amended conditions, yes.
Amended hours till 10:00 p.m., right?
Just say, as amended, as, read the motion and then as amended.
A resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving a conditional use permit, project number 21-0000841, allowing for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption at the existing Life Rooted Restaurant at 2202 North Glen Oaks Boulevard, based on the findings of the fact and subject to the project conditions of approval as amended.
Perfect. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Is there any more discussion on this item? Seeing none, go ahead and poll us.
Chairman Rosati?
Yes.
Board Member Elrick?
Yes.
Board Member Wick?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number two, now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 22-0003178, a request for a conditional use permit to allow the height of the top plate to be measured from the average grade in lieu of being measured from natural grade pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code BMC Section 10-1603C1 for a proposed single-family dwelling at 1521 Alameda Avenue. Before we begin, do any Planning Board members have any financial, legal, or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any Planning Board members had any communications, including written or oral with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any communications on this matter?
Yes, I believe you've received all the communications that were submitted to the city prior to the hearing.
Yes. We will, will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Rosati, members of the board. My name is Mosia Medina, Associate Planner and Project Planner. Can I please have the slides? Thank you. The project before you is a request for a conditional use permit for the project located at 1521 East Alameda Avenue. The subject property is located at 1521 East Alameda Avenue and is zoned R1 Single Family Residential and has a general plan designation of low-density residential. The property is located within the boundaries of the city of Burbank but is adjacent to the border with the city of Glendale across Alameda Avenue. The project site is surrounded by R1-zone properties. As seen in the arrow view shown in the slide, the subject property is located in a residential area surrounded by single-family homes. As seen in the street view photo depicted, the subject property is located on the left, and the home to the right is on the property located to the north of the subject property, which is at a higher elevation than the subject property. As seen in the street view depicted, the property located to the south of the subject home is at a lower grade than the subject property. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing home on the lot to build a new single-family home. As part of the review of the new home, items such as FAR setbacks, parking, and height are reviewed for compliance with the municipal code. These items are reviewed through the plan check process. BMC Section 10-1603C1 requires that the top of plate and overall height of a home must be measured using the existing grade height of a lot. As indicated in the image shown, the home on the left has varying heights because it is following the existing grade of the lot, which has existing height differences. The image on the right shows the home on a flat lot, which allows for the overall height of the home to be measured from a flat plane, allowing the home to maintain a floor level that is on a flat plane. Per Burbank Municipal Code Section 10-1603C1, the overall height of a home can be measured using the average grade of the lot rather than the existing grade of the lot through the approval of a CUP. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit so that the home that is being proposed at the subject property will have the top of plate measured from the average grade height of the lot rather than the existing grade of the lot. Due to the grade change of the lot, the applicant has requested a CUP to have their project considered. considered under this provision of the municipal code. As part of the CUP requests, the applicant will demolish the existing home on the lot and will build a new single-family home. The CUP request before you tonight is only for how the height of the new home will be measured, and not for the design or layout of the proposed home. Conditions have been placed on the project as part of the resolution that will require the applicant to adhere to all of the development standards that apply to the construction of a new single-family home dwelling in a R1 zoning lot. As seen in the image, the red line represents the existing grade while the yellow line represents the average grade. As you can see in the image depicted, the existing grade of the lot slopes higher towards the north of the property. Through the CUP requests, the applicant is permitted to measure the top of plate height of the home using the average grade of the lot, rather than the existing grade as previously discussed. The way that the average grade is determined is by comparing the lowest point of the building footprint where the home will be located, and the highest point of the building footprint where the home will be located, and taking the average of these two points. As seen in the image in the slide, there's an approximate four-foot height difference between the lowest point and the highest point of the lot, which creates difficulty for the applicant when constructing a home if they're required to follow the, the existing slope of the lot. As seen in the image depicted on the slide, the red dotted line represents the existing slope of the grade of the lot, which expands the width of the lot, going from a low elevation on the south side and progressing to a higher elevation on the north side. The yellow dotted line represents the average grade of the lot, which provides a flat plane. By not using the average grade of the lot, the top of plate of the home would need to follow the red dotted line, which would require the applicant to build a split-level home, or reduce the ceiling, reduce the floor-to-ceiling height, making it more difficult to construct a home that is compatible with the homes found in the neighborhood. This CUP request does not allow for the home to exceed the height limitations in the Burbank Municipal Code, but rather allows for the applicant to build the home using a flat plane, which can be represented, which can be seen represented on the slide by the yellow dotted line. Allowing the home to utilize the average grade will ensure that the proposed dwelling is constructed with a consistent top-of-plate height across the entire width of the structure, and will avoid having the applicant construct a northern portion of the home at a lower elevation to compensate for the gradual slope difference. As part of the review of a CUP, there are findings that need to be met in order for a recommendation for approval to be made. Staff has reviewed the project against these findings, and have determined, and have determined that the project as proposed would be able to meet these findings. These findings can be found in the staff report provided to the board. Planning staff has received public comments regarding the project and have been forwarded to the members of the board. Staff has reviewed the comments and would like to point out that the request being made by the applicant is not a deviation from the municipal code, but rather a request that is specifically allowed for the R1 development standards that would apply to non-hillside-designated properties that exhibit hillside characteristics. The CUP request provides an objective standard, which allows for the measurement of maximum allowable plate height and overall height from the average grade of the structure and existing grade, subject to the project meeting the findings of fact. As noted in the report and board resolution, this project meets those requirements, and thus the approval of the CUP by the board is warranted. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning board approve the resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank approving project number twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-three-one-seven-eight, a conditional use permit to allow the top-of-plate height of a proposed single-family dwelling located at fifteen-twenty-one East Alameda Avenue to be measured from the average grade in lieu of being measured from the existing grade pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section ten-dash-one-dash-six-zero-three-C-one, based on the findings of fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions that you may have about the project, thank you.
Thank you, I would now invite the applicant or the representative to address the planning board for a maximum time of, time of fifteen minutes.
Hi, I'm James Quine, the architect on the project, and, um, I just had this one board, which is the same slide, if you could pass it. It's just, it's real simple, um, yeah, you know, as you've all been out to the lot, I'm sure you'll see that when you stand on the street from right to left, the lot falls about five feet, and, um, if you were able to study the plans, you'll notice that we very intentionally set the entire second floor in eight feet on one side from the first floor, about the same from the front, on the right side, we're probably twenty or twenty-five feet in. There's really no two-story walls anywhere on this house, the, we're doing a prairie-style house, and typical to that style of house, the second floor kind of nests in the roof of the first floor. So I know we're talking about plate heights, but, uh, there really are no two-story walls on this house, they're all set in, and the back, there's a deck that breaks it up. Uh, so as far as, you know, I know the goal of the code is massing, certainly, because we work in lots of communities, and we definitely never put big tall buildings next to other buildings. And on the setbacks, we're exceeding all the required setbacks, we're not like right to the limit on all of them, there's a little bit of breathing room in all of them. And the plate height code, as Masiel, who we've been working with for months on this, explained, yeah, it sort of seems to have an intention for flatter lots, if you take the average ceiling height of a house and you figure most people from their driveway, they have to go up a few inches to get to their garage, and then from their garage, they go up a few inches to get into their house, you've already eaten up a foot or two, and then when you do your ceiling heights, your floor thickness, and your second-floor ceiling heights, if your lot slopes at all, you run out of room really quick, and we try not to have garages that are semi-subterranean, that's just a rain nightmare, you know, so we try to avoid all that. And so, yeah, when you, when you look at the slope of the lot, you look at the width of the lot, and you look at the fact that the second floor is set so far in on all sides, um, there's, uh, there's, there's no harm in the additional height, but when you look at the exhibit I gave, which Masiel had up on the screen, but I always think it's good when you have something in your hands, if you look at that, that upper red line, it's kind of like a seesaw, or a teeter totter, it's, it's eighteen inches below the maximum height on one side, and eighteen inches above the maximum height on the other side, with the center of it being dead even, so it's, it's kind of a wash. And then the yellow line, of course, just represents the reference from the averaging grade, so it seems like a very well-intentioned and non-harmful design, and we've been having a good time working with staff, getting, working on all this, and I think the owner has a couple of words they'd like to say as well, use the remainder of the time.
Good evening, members of the board, could I have the slides, please? Thank you. If you'll allow me, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on our project, as well as our, our attempts at finding a house for our, our family and building this house, and I'd also like to thank you all for taking the time to consider our application. I'm actually a thirty-three-year resident of Burbank, I grew up here since I was four years old, coincidentally, I grew up on the same block, same block as where we actually managed to buy, buy this house. I went through Burbank Public Schools, have a lot of good memories growing up in this community, contributed to this track and cross-country teams at Burbank High, excelled in my class. Suffice to say, I think I've been a good member of the Burbank community, hopefully, and I look forward to trying to build roots here and allow my own kids to, to take advantage of the same opportunities that I had growing up here, and, um, and, and appreciate the diversity of the community, the educational system, and all of our family really lives within blocks, if, within four miles, if not blocks, of, of where we managed to find a house, and so that's, that's what brings me here today. As we were looking to buy, to find a house, we, we were really trying to find a place where we could just have, you know, a yard for our kids to run around, we looked for five years, house hunting in this market, to try to find something, you guys can appreciate how, how hard it's been. A lot of houses we actually turned down because they had a step-down living room or step-down dining room, and our ambition here is really just to build a modest, traditional-style house that, that could accommodate our needs, you know, with a family of four, and, uh, my wife and I both have to work from home, so we need a little bit of space for that, and, and that's really all we're trying to accomplish. I've captured here some of the history of, of our history with the property, we purchased this property twenty-two months ago, and since August of last year, we've been working with the city to try to, to try to get our plans approved. The board might recall that, um, the city actually changed the building code earlier this year, and we took a pause in our permitting process as a result of that, because the code changes might have affected our property considerably, I'll come back to that later, because that, that's kind of added to the timeline a little bit. Here, I just want to recap some of our objectives with this property, right, as I said, we're just trying to build a family home, um, we're, we're generally a quiet, hard-working family, we're not the type to have big parties or be nuisance to the neighborhood, I, I grew up in the neighborhood and I appreciate the context that we're in. We're actually trying to do a few things on this property that I think will, will be exemplary in the city of Burbank, hopefully, I, I think we might have one of the most energy-efficient homes in, in the city if we, if we, if we're successful. We're gonna have twice as much insulation as the city requires, we're gonna have a fresh air ventilation system that's gonna reduce our need to open windows, the AC on this house is gonna be the size of a small apartment, frankly, because we just are insulated and so tight on the outside, uh, so, and not to mention the solar that we're gonna have and all of that, so we're, we're trying to build a, a high-class, high-grade building using the mo, modern approaches to building science, um, and while we looked at trying to preserve maybe part of the existing structure, numerous architects, including our own, told us, you know, it'd be tough to do that and achieve the same objectives of energy efficiency and, and building design that we had in mind. Jim mentioned that we're, that we're building a prairie-style house, and as some of you might be familiar with, prairie-style architecture is quintessential example of arts and crafts, the arts and crafts movement started in the early twentieth century, it's characterized by having a low, low-slope roofs and a low-to-the-ground design. Our overall height, we're allowed to go up to thirty feet on overall height, but, um, our overall height is less than twenty-five feet, so even if you measure it from the, from the sloped grade, we're nowhere near the overall height limit that the city allows. The only thing that we're using this CUP for is the top plate height. The top plate height was actually something that this board recommended to the city council to, to modify from twenty feet to twenty-two feet back in February of this year. The city council reviewed that recommendation, along with a, a range of others in the Zone Text Amendment, and unfortunately for us, they approved everything except this one change from twenty to twenty-two feet, and they didn't quite reject it, they just asked the planning department to go back and revise the language to, to fine-tune it so that it only applies to the specific lots that need it, so that houses on flat lots don't take advantage and build bulkier homes. Our house is one of those lots that need it, we're on a slope that doesn't permit us to build a two-story house without this use of the average grade or without a higher top-plate height allowance, so that's what we've asked you for. In a bit, you'll likely hear from, um, one of my neighbors who lives downslope from us, you might hear concerns about privacy, but you can see on this page that the house at fifteen-fifteen East Alameda is actually thirty-six feet away from our house where, where we'll build it. They're, they have a garage and a, and a side yard, which sets their house twenty-six away, twenty-six feet from the property line, we have a ten-foot required setback on our side, so that's thirty-six feet, our second story, as Jim mentioned, is eight feet back from that side wall, so in aggregate, we're forty-four feet away from their house, that's almost the entire lit, width of a standard residential lot in Burbank, they're usually fifty feet wide, so we're very far apart from each other, especially on the second floor, and we're also gonna install privacy hedges along the, the perimeter, so that'll further increase the privacy for both, both parties. In advance of our project coming to the, to the hearing, we actually, I approached the four neighbors, the, two neighbors to the south, two neighbors to the north, in a, back in October, just to tell them about our plans, I spent more than an hour speaking with the neighbors of fifteen-fifteen East Alameda, we compared construction tips, talked about, um, the process, the permitting process, despite spending an hour with them, what we didn't talk about at all was any, any questions about our design, any challenges to our design, none whatsoever. It wasn't until about a week ago that I found out they planned to make comments in, in opposition to our CUP application. Since then, I've tried to meet with them again, but they refused to meet with me. But since finding out about, finding out about this about a week ago, we've been scrambling to try to prepare for this meeting and, and make our case, we actually went so far as to canvass the neighborhood, and act, I've talked to the neighborhood, asked to understand, to explain our project to them and, and understand any opposition or any concerns that neighbors might have. We did five door-to-door trips around the blocks from Elmwood to Alameda and Sunset Canyon and Bel Air and up Valencia, during that, we've collected thirty-six signatures, not that the city asked for this, but just as a representative sample of, of the neighborhood, thirty-six signatures from neighbors who understand and support our project, that's more than forty percent of people living in this community. The people that didn't sign weren't home, or they wanted to talk to their spouse before they signed, and, you know, we never caught them again. So, I think this is, hopefully, evidence that, that, you know, by and large, the community is, is comfortable with the design that we've proposed. Lastly, before I close, I want to refer back to some, some objectives I found in the Burbank Twenty Thirty-five General Plan, which I think our property and project support in, in close keeping with, with the objectives. There's objectives around clean air and climate and sustainability, encouraging the city to, to encourage the design and of, of buildings that consume less energy or, or efficient and comfortable. I mentioned earlier the insulation practices we have, we're gonna have a fresh air ventilation system that actually preserves energy, like, as the air leaves, it, it cools the air that's coming in, so we don't have to open our windows as frequently, we don't have to use our AC as much. I really think we're gonna have a, a cutting-edge, um, efficient home. And there's also objectives around fire protection and reducing fire hazards, obviously, there's, the city has a lot of concern around the properties in the hillside area and the, and the risks that we've seen over the years of Brace Canyon, Brand Park, other places. The exterior insulation we're gonna use on our house is made out of a mineral fiber, it's actually heat-resistant up to eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred degrees Fahrenheit, so this is highly heat-resistant, in case it ever comes to that, God forbid, but, you know, these are the type of things that we're trying to do in our new, new construction, that would be very, very difficult and exorbitantly expensive to try to do in the existing structure that's there today. So, that's the appeal that I wanted to raise with you guys in the context I wanted to provide, again, I appreciate your time, and we'll stand available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public who wish to comment by telephone, please call eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five and address the planning board. Callers will be placed in EQ until all persons, all in-person comments have been received. The phone lines are now open, please bear with us as we get the first few callers through. For callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or your computer, and take the phone off speaker when you deliver your comment. Do we have any callers or cards?
Yes, the first speaker is Brian Booth.
Mr. Booth, come on up. Mr. Booth is not here, next caller, next speaker.
Next is Pat Tomsky.
Good evening, I am the neighbor at fifteen-fifteen East Alameda.
Downslope or upslope?
Downslope, the way he spoke of that's in there, we have spoken with him once and once only regarding the situation, and, um, we're open to communication with that, but at a certain point, it was a moot point to speak, and I felt threatened to meet with him in person, so I'm not looking to do that, this is why we didn't meet once again. We're the owners of fifteen-fifteen, we're gonna do, we would like to do a Mills Act for the home, and have it be a historic property, hopefully a nice shining example of an old house that they used to have back in that era, and it can have a garden, it can have tours come through, do the true historic Mills Act bit, we just don't want the use permit to be any higher than it is, because it just, they're, it's obnoxious, it leans over into our properties, leads into the properties, five properties around where we are, which I spoke to yesterday and the previous day, I have signatures of people that he has his green dots, that told me they do not want it absolutely. I don't know how that works, but, um, didn't want it out-of-character home, it says it's prairie, which is awesome, but it really turns out to be prairie, but I'd like my, I've seen a lot of these houses where they're built, you see the giant house, you see the little house below, I don't want to be one of those houses where you have this giant house and you've got this little house below, the sad example of what's gone on around the city, so I'm looking to not have that happen as much as possible. Everybody that I spoke to, the adjacent homes, were pretty angry last night about what's gonna happen, so I don't know how that doesn't work with the fact that I, he has people saying yes to everything. has people saying yes to everything. His grade, the nine-and-a-half-foot living room ceilings can be adapted, can be graded further. He's grading already anyway. He's putting in a pool, wiping out the whole lot, gonna do it anyway. He either keeps eight feet in the living room or does nine-and-a-half feet. That's the difference. That's why he's doing this. As far as I know, unless I can be corrected. And that's what I'm looking to do, is just have it be, hold up to the law of what is in the city, as opposed to giving an allowance to make it bigger, just to keep it as small as possible. Everybody around is freaking out because this house is coming in. I have proof of that, recorded proof audibly and recorded proof in signatures. Contact me about that if you need more information with these people, and I just don't want it to invade our, our light and view and privacy where we are. It's gonna be the shorter home with the big thing right there next to us, and it does, is a little bit of space, which is lovely, but it still is a two-story thing. It's a two, two-story house as opposed to a one-story house or a softer house. So, that's it. I'm looking to do something more proper, more old-fashioned. Um, they're not, I have a feeling, because of other items that I know, them speaking to neighbors and, uh, speaking with people they bought the property from, that, uh, they may say one thing and the other thing may not happen. Um, but I'm not gonna go into that, but I approve of that as well. Recorded, signed by people who owned the property previously and people, neighbors around about their contact with them. But that's it. I just wanted to have a nicer place as opposed to giving a small variance. It's not that big a deal. He's grading, he's doing his thing. Just grade a little bit more, get what you want.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Lydia Mather.
Hello.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, you know, I've been around Burbank fifty years, and one of the best things about Burbank was that it maintained its charm, and when you continue to allow variances, block by block, you get houses that don't have a compatible scope or scale. And I'm in full support of the previous speaker's position, and I would hope that you would consider that, especially on an uphill slope in a charming neighborhood. Um, so I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Alina Moradyan.
Hello.
Welcome.
Um, again, thank you for your time on this project. Um, I went around, uh, with my sister trying to get signatures as she was going around, and, um, I, I was really pleased to find so many supporters for the property, mostly because from the outside, nothing really changes. The setbacks, the height, everything is pretty conservatively done, tastefully done. Um, I can understand Pat, however, I don't know why she would feel threatened. Um, I went back to find the next-door, um, post, which is not there. There were certain things said that was not very neighborly, I mean, but that's not my place, but I can understand how she would want to keep her house the way she'd like, but if a house is not historic, it's just old, and somebody's trying to do it in a tasteful way, as long as it abides by the guidelines, um, the internal heights seems to, you know, it's, makes sense because the house is not on a flat, it's on a slope, and obviously, I mean, not obviously, but, uh, that provision is there to use for those type of properties. So, I really hope you can grant the request. It doesn't make any difference on the outside to the neighbors, and right next to their house is a two-story, as are others around, um, Valencia and the surrounding. So, um, if it makes sense, I hope you guys will request, uh, grant their request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Sose Markarian.
Hello, thanks for your time and consideration. Um, I've been a Burbank resident since two thousand and seven, and I became neighbors with Aura and Anita in two thousand and nineteen. Um, one of the first things I noticed about them was how caring and conscientious they were with, um, with respect to the residents of the building, especially the elderly. Um, I got to see the inside of their home. It was very elegant and tastefully done, and, um, they built a really, really, um, homey place for themselves and their two boys. Um, I guess when your neighbor has two young children, you're a little nervous about noise and living next to them, but it was completely unnecessary in their case. They have two very well-behaved boys, they brought such cheerful energy to the building, and it was always a breath of fresh air to bump into them in the building. Um, this just goes to say what great parents they are and what a great, um, job they've done parenting and what great people Aura and Anita are. Um, I don't see why they shouldn't be able to build the kind of home they wanna build to grow their family, they, they grow old in. Um, they've been great members of the neighborhood, they've been great neighbors, and they're very valuable members of the community, so I hope you'll take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Albert Abrahamian.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think the neighbors, I live, uh, two, three houses around the block. I think the neighbors should have, should be proud of have a neighbor like that who grew up in Burbank, attended school in Burbank, graduated Burbank High School as a solo dictorian, and graduated at one of the best universities in the country, and has a family and a career, and wants to build his home to meet his needs, the minimum needs of today's society with working at home, and considers all the guidelines and requirements of the city, and wants to be a good citizen and good neighbor for the neighbors. I don't think any objection is reasonable, other than just being selfish. Other than that, it's, everything is positive in this project. I hope you accept that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Armin Abrahamian.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time. I have, uh, lived in Burbank for, since I was six years old, and I've seen firsthand how much the city has changed over the past thirty years. Uh, Burbank High School, where I'm very proud to have attended and had a great time, uh, has grown and changed significantly since my time there in the late nineties, and, uh, it's barely recognizable. When I go to visit old teachers and friends, uh, the, the campus has changed significantly since that time, to meet the needs of the growing student population and the changing, uh, character and needs of the education, education today. Uh, at the same time, a lot of the same people and teachers are still there, still working to make Burbank High a great learning environment and experience for students today. I raise these points because I think it's important for every person, every organization, and indeed, every neighborhood and city to evolve. While it's valuable to know our roots and our values, it's important not to cling too tightly to the past. We all need to grow and change and adapt to the times. Aura and Anita are trying to do exactly that with this home they're trying to build. They want to build a home for their family that both respects the city's codes and the historical character of their neighborhood, but that has evolved to meet the expectations of today's large families and part-time work-from-home lives that we all lead today. No one should get in the way of such a well-considered plan, and I encourage you to approve this project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Emma Abrahamian.
Hi, thank you for your time. Um, I just wanna mention something about the buildings that Pat was re- referring to, that we have seen also several buildings, new houses in Burbank that have been kind of built out of character. I should agree with that. The house that Aura and Anita are making, trying to build is a Prairie style. Even Pat agreed that if it, that is the case, that's great, because it's a beautiful style. It's not something out of place, out of character, and they are just gonna beautify the environment, the area, and not put something huge and big and out of character there. I think that, what, that would be considered, because I think that actually brings more value to the area. It's not gonna be one of those houses that all of us have seen in Burbank, which I do not agree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Harry Berberian.
Thank you for your time.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've been a Burbank resident for almost forty years now. I am, since nineteen ninety, I've lived next door to the Abrahamians, and I can speak to their character, I can speak to Aura's, uh, character, and, uh, you know, I, I agree that historically Burbank is important, and historically Burbank is very family-oriented, and this is what they're trying to do. I would like, uh, your consideration to, you know, be, you know, child, child-conscious and, uh, know that they're trying to come in to raise a family, and I'm very proud of that. I live not too far from them, and I'd love to have them as my neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
The next speaker is Mr. Schlossman.
Good evening.
Uh, President Rosati, you know, I remember the Pavelka deal like it was yesterday, and I had a son born shortly after, and he carries the name Matthew.
That's, that's, uh, that's a great tribute.
Thank you for your service to the three of you. I've talked to the city council, and they're gonna double your salaries. Okay, uh, I'm in, I'm invited here, I live adjacent to this guy, I never met him, but I like him already. I feel bad for him that he's had to go through all this. It's, uh, it doesn't seem just, and I know that the dollar signs just keep adding up for this poor fella. Okay, I've reviewed all the plans and the exhibits. I think this neighbor who's full of sour grapes, she'd be grateful for this project next to our house, and, you know, we've got, we've got this thing, AB thirty-five, and the, this applicant could've, could've divided the lot into two fifty-foot lots and built four units on each lot. How would she feel then?
SB nine.
SB nine, thank you for correcting me. Okay, okay. Um, I looked at the house, it's functionally obso- obsolescent. You know, houses were out, and, and, you know, that what was cool then is not cool now, and, you know, the, considering the lot size, the applicant's very modest, and it's, it totally fits the neighborhood, and it's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna be an asset. I salute the, 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 uh, architect who's sitting here. Wow, I'd, I'd love to hire him, you know? Okay, I thought I say, I already said it's in good taste. Um, I think that this entire application is de minimis and trivial. I don't think he should be put through it. Uh, I'm impressed that he's adding a swimming pool that goes to his family, good for him. Um, I wish you, I wish you had the power to refund the fees that he's paid. I don't think that's just. Um, it's a beautiful home. Welcome to my new neighbors, I hope, I'm certain of it. Um, so many people come before you with trick remodels, you know, they tear down part of it and leave one, one wall, and that's a farce, and that's not this guy. He's up and up. I mean, who could ask for more? And, you know, the neighbor next door, I'll, I'll finish this on, I'll, I'll finish my comment on this, you know? I don't think she's in the real world. I listened to her comments very carefully. She talked to me on the way in, she saw me with my card, and I said, "Ma'am, I'll solve your problem, I'll buy your house from you." And she told me three million dollars, and she says, "I'm serious." So, that tells you that, you know, where her head is at, you know? But anyways, thank you for your consideration, and thank you for the hard work you do.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
The next speaker is Von Karlglaunian.
Is Mr. Karlglaunian here?
The next speaker is Nune Gregorian. The final speaker is Ashley Gemborian.
Good evening.
You may recall me, Mr. Rosati, from probably five years ago when I went, we, my family went through a very traumatic experience, so, um, we own a house on Valencia, even though we, a year ago, we built a house on, uh, ten seventy-five East Grinnell, uh, over all these objections that we received from the neighbors, but we still own the house on Valencia, and so, these very nice people came knocking on our door asking if we would object to the project. And of course, I felt like it was my duty to come and speak today because we were victims of the sour, uh, sour grapes as well. Anyway, I just wanted to, I, when I understood what the issue is about the CUP, so, I just took the measuring tape to see what's the, what are we talking about here, like eighteen inches? I mean, really? Uh, this is gonna impose on a neighbor who is thirty-six feet away from the project? Come on, why are we wasting people's time? This is a joke. Uh, and it really upsets me and it hurts me that neighbors like this start fighting over very minute things, and they have to live together for many years. I don't like going into my neighborhood because I feel like everybody hates us. But anyway, we're doing fine. Uh, our basement has not bothered anybody because they can't see it. We don't have multiple families living in the house, as they had alleged. My son didn't even get to move in because he went to college, but that's another issue. So, I think that, um, this is not a variance they're asking, from what I understand, it's not a deviation from the code. It's a large lot, and they certainly are not any, anyone that would threaten anybody. I don't know why the word threaten was used. I, I just like it when people use red herrings, you know, like, they just wanna throw words to, to deviate the, the, from the subject. The subject is the CUP. The alternative is, if you don't give him, them the CUP, the alternative is to build a house on multi-level, and they have little children, and they have elderly parents or elderly family who come visit them. So, I think it's fair to forego that, the eighteen inches, nobody is gonna have a problem with that and issue them the, or allow them to do, to get the CUP. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any callers? We do? A lot?
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, planning board. Uh, great fall on the life, uh, restaurant. We have missed it since it went out of business. Um, as far as this project goes, I have been a twenty-three-year Burbank resident. I sell real estate here and am involved with an organization called Preserve Burbank. In March of this year, the city council voted for the Zone Text Amendment to the single-family design guidelines for Burbank. Uh, this amendment was a result of this planning board's recommendation. The design checklist and any requirement of compatibility for the neighborhood is gone. The design guideline, uh, excuse me, at the same time, there was a request to raise the maximum top plate height to twenty-two feet, but that request was denied. The top plate remained at twenty feet. Staff assured the community and the council that all the elements of the former single-family design guidelines could be codified and that these changes would reduce the backlog of building permits. Tonight, you're faced with a request for a conditional use permit for the project at fifteen twenty-one East Alameda. I'll admit my confusion over this request is the zoning for this property is R1, and this is a single-family home, and after visiting the site, there's nothing unusual about it. The applicant is seeking a variance for the height of the top plate by requesting that the height be determined by the average of the lot rather than the lowest point. Burbank Municipal Code ten dash one dash six oh three C is extremely clear on this issue. The maximum height of the top plate of a two-story home is twenty feet. The measurement is taken at each point along the face of the structure at no less than one-foot intervals, and the reference grade shall be established as the existing ground surface of the lot prior to any grading, cut, or fill activity or the finished ground surface of the lot. After any grading, cut- surface of the lot, after any grading, cut, or fill activity, whichever is lower. Nothing unusual about this lot that would suggest that this home could not be built by simply lowering the interior ceiling height or grading the property deeper to reduce the top plate height. The garage could easily be moved to the other side of the lot so that there would not be any issue with water intrusion into the garage. Granting this CUP or variance would set a precedent for future applicants to use the average lot height rather than the lowest existing elevation, which would essentially be adding in this case, two feet to the top plate height, which the city council is clearly against. I ask you to reject this request. Thank you.
Any more callers?
Hello?
Welcome, you're on with the planning board. Good evening.
Steve, you are live with the planning board?
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, planning board. Uh, my name is Steve Backboomean, I'm a twenty-five-year Burbank resident, a former member of the civil service board, current member and chair of the Building and Fire Code Appeals Board. Frankly, I'm aghast that we're, we're putting this family through this right now. As a first matter, the, the entire project is consistent with the Burbank Building Code. As a second matter, I would estimate that there are probably between thirty-three and forty percent of the buildings in that immediate area are two-story buildings. As a third matter, and, and other people have touched on this, it'll, it's gonna be thirty-six feet away from the neighbor's building, so, you know, that's a blessing. I think my, my house might be twelve feet away from my neighbor, so. And as a last point, they bought the building, we have, we have real problems in this community, the CUP isn't one of them, so that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you for your call.
Thank you.
Next caller.
Betty, you are live with the planning board?
Uh, good evening, city council members and staff, my name is Betty Amaya and I have been a Burbank resident for twenty-three years. I own a home less than a quarter of a mile away from the property in question. I believe that the city of Burbank has very strict building codes and regulations in place for a reason and rightfully so. If a given proposal meets all the required standards in place, then it should be allowed to be built. From my understanding, this property belongs to a growing family who needs a safe and efficient home with all the space they can get, especially if that means building a two-story house to preserve the backyard, which is an essential part of any home for a family with young children. That being said, provisions are in place for a reason and if they are being met, why stop this family from building their dream home in their beloved neighborhood, a home which will further add charm and value to our city? Thank you for your time and God bless.
Thanks for your call. Next caller.
Alina, you are live with the planning board?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, everyone, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Alina, I'm a Burbank resident and I close my neighbor to the project and I wanted to call in and voice my support for the Abramians. As I understand it and as I heard the staff member explain, the Abramians, as members of our community and as owners of fifteen twenty-one Alameda, it sounds like they've done their due diligence to make certain that their project is in compliance with the municipal rules and regulations of our city. Doesn't sound like they're deviating from what is actually allowed. While I understand that there's always gonna be some sort of opposition to anything people do, I think it's important to give property owners the right to use their property, else we run the risk of encroaching on their rights. Uh, one thing that I learned from law school as a legal scholar is that in this, in this country, we take property rights very seriously. As such, property owners' rights, as long as they're not in violation of the law, trump individual differences. Um, I'm in support of their project, I'm hopeful that they can proceed with the, with building their home. Uh, people who own their homes should have the right to do whatever they want with their property. Everyone's entitled to their own rights as long as they're not encroaching on somebody else's rights. I don't believe the Abramians are encroaching on anyone's rights. If anything, as a Burbank resident, I welcome those who go above and beyond to build homes which are energy efficient and it sounds like the Abramians have done just that or are, are planning to do just that. This is not an investor who's building a home who's gonna turn around and flip it and sell it to somebody else, this is a family with roots in Burbank, they're simply, their desire is to simply build a forever home for their family. I welcome their project, I look forward to seeing their home and I'm hopeful that the city will grant them, uh, so that they can proceed forward.
Thank you for your call. Next caller.
Jennifer Landon, you are live with the planning board?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, this is Jennifer Landon, uh, and I just wanted to call in and give, um, some information in regards to this property. Um, I am not only a broker, but I'm also a local real estate appraiser, um, and I actually had the listing at the time of sale. So I am intimately involved with this property and know it very well. Uh, the information that I wanted to provide to the board this evening is at the time of sale, we had over twenty-eight offers on this property. And of all of the offers on the property, I believe, and it was the, uh, from speaking to the buyers that came through, that all of them had intended of some sort of development to the lot. Because of the size and how the property was underutilized based on the square footage of the home. Um, they did not wind up going to a developer, thank goodness. Um, we were very happy that an owner user that had grown up in the neighborhood would be, uh, making their home from the property. At the time of sale, they did not know exactly what they were going to do, um, but we did know and had the, um, had the information that they would be living there, which gave, um, me as a listing agent, a lot of confidence that whatever they did do, it would be in line with the community. Um, it makes me very sad that it, it has taken them so much time and effort to get to make their family home, um, but again, I just wanted to relay to everyone that at the time they purchased the property, um, being the fact that I did represent, um, the listing, that every buyer that came through did so with the intention of either developing it, um, and expanding on what was there. Again, I'm glad a developer did not get the property, uh, to do a lot split and to do multiple, multiple units and, um, I do believe that our Alameda, um, deserved to build the home that they intended. And I just wanted to.
Thank you, thank you for calling.
Thank you.
And no more callers?
No more callers in the queue.
Okay, there be no further, uh, public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to come up and say a couple of things? Or make any further comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments here, thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, just wanted to respond to some of the comments that were made here. Um, first of all, there was, I think, a comment regarding privacy, as mentioned in the staff report and the presentation, um, the applicant is required per the, uh, standard requirements in the code for, um, houses built in an R1 zone lot to provide, uh, privacy hedges along the side of the house. Um, so any new two-story home that's built in an R1 zone is required to provide those hedges for privacy and that is no different for this project, um, it's also a requirement as part of the resolution that they follow those standards. I also wanted to touch on the, there was a question or comment regarding the top of plate height, um, just to be clear, the, uh, requests being made here is not so that the top of plate height is exceeded or exceeds what the Burbank Municipal Code requires, it's still going to adhere or follow the twenty-foot maximum, uh, plate height, this is just gonna be measured from the average grade, uh, rather than from the existing grade. Also, the, uh, maximum, uh, roof height for a new home would be thirty feet, um, the applicant is proposing twenty-six nine, twenty-six feet nine inches. There was a comment, um, regarding this being a variance, I just wanna make it clear that this is not a variance, this is a conditional use permit. This conditional use permit is explicitly allowed and permitted in the R1 zone in, uh, the height section of the Municipal Code, so any, any project that's located in an R1 zone would be able to invoke the CUP if they saw it fit for their property. Requiring them to essentially follow the, the, uh, existing grade, you know, they would have to lower the ceiling heights, so, um, it would be somewhere around seven, seven feet and nine inches or so, I think it was. Um, so that does prove a little bit difficult, that's not typically what is seen, um, uh, when people build new homes or room additions, the ceiling heights anywhere between, you know, eight, ten, or twelve feet. Um, so they're, they're within that, um, that number. Um, I think that's, I, I, I think that's all the responses that I have, I'm, I'm sure my, one of my colleagues would wanna touch up on that.
Okay.
If, if I may, Chair, um, just real quick, uh, I, I think to tease out this a little bit more is, uh, I wanted to make sure to the project planner, Mr. Medina's comments, just to add, because I think we heard the comments of CUP variance and precedent setting and I just wanted to make sure, um, as we've previously noted, this is not a deviation from the development standards, but a request for a conditional use permit to take the measurement of top of plate, which still will not exceed twenty feet, but do it from the average grade and not from the existing natural grade. And that is something that is allowed under the code, so in essence, that by itself is an objective standard, there's a way to calculate that, it's easily, easily understood and determined and in addition to that, the project complies with all other development standards that the board, as noted by one of the callers, spent quite an amount of time undertaking and reviewing, so there's a difference between the CUP requirement to consider average height versus a flat-out modification of the plate height, which was not approved by the council. So I wanna make sure that that's distinguished because I think there was a little bit of confusion in how that was presented and I'd hate to have that resonate with the board because that's not what's occurring. Last but not least, uh, there was reference, I think, by the same caller, how this could be precedent setting and the reality of it is that every conditional use permit, like any other discretionary permit, uh, is either successful or not based on the merits of the specific project and the location. So each, uh, conditional use permit request, if there were others in the future, would have to stand on the merits of that particular site and the conditions of that site. It's staff's assessment, and as you have before you in the resolution and in the staff report, that the project has met all the required findings, everything from, is it in an R1 zone? Uh, will the project have sufficient adequate access, uh, to a street for, uh, traffic? Uh, will the project be complying with all applicable development standards and does the result of that, uh, create an impact to adjoining land uses? The reality of it is the project complies with all the R1 standards, subject to, uh, council, uh, board consideration of this CUP request, uh, so, uh, just wanted to kinda circle that back because I think that's a clear distinction and ultimately, absent the CUP, uh, I think there was concerns about demolishing of the structure and the structure's historic potential. The reality of it is that even absent the CUP request, they could demolish the structure and build a new. So I just wanted to make sure that those were touched upon and they are not exceeding the overall height, which the code under the R1 standards that were protected would allow a top of roof peak of up to thirty feet and they're well below that, as, uh, Mr. Musial has noted, it's twenty-six nine, uh, you know, when you measure from existing grade and when you take the average grade, I believe it's something around twenty-four, six. So they're well within the parameters of the allowable building envelope and the setbacks that they've provided create even more generous, uh, setbacks and privacy for the upper floors of the structure that they're proposing. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure kind of to encapsulate and close that part of it and as Mr. Musial noted, staff's recommendation is that the board approve the project as presented, subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to make any further comments or their representative, you have a maximum time of ten minutes?
Thanks again for your time, I, I'll try not to take up too much more of it, um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, uh, because A, my character was maligned and also, um, uh, just wanted to add a couple of things. So, um, I won't repeat what the staff has already commented on in response to some of the comments that were raised earlier, um, just, there was comments regarding the potential for us to grade our property further below, essentially, we'd have to depress our house below curb level and make it kind of a trap for all the debris from the street, which is not something anyone would wanna do. Alternatively, we can have ceiling heights that are less than eight feet, but then good luck selling the house ever in the future, whenever we, one day for, in the future, pass away, our kids trying to get rid of it or something, so, um, I don't think that's a wise decision for anyone to do, um, nor is it very, very appealing. Secondly, the, the neighbor commented that, uh, she had, so, stepping back, I mentioned that I, that I met with a neighbor, uh, three weeks ago, um, as we were speaking, she specifically said, oh, you're building a prayer style, I'm so glad that you're not making another McMansion. And then, two weeks later, she posts on next door, oh, my neighbor's gonna try to make a McMansion. Okay, funny, um, clearly it's not a McMansion, I think everyone might agree with that. Secondly, um, she stated earlier today that neighbors in the immediate vicinity are up in arms about our project. Uh, the neighbor immediately to the north of me, which is a two-story house, as is the one next to it, neighbors immediately to the north of me are bedridden, I've spoken with them once, but they'd never answer the door, they, they're not able to, so good luck with that. The neighbors to the south of her, uh, we've spoken with three times, they had no concerns whatsoever, frankly, they said they're, they wouldn't sign our petition because they were afraid of what the, our, the other neighbor in between might do to them, so there's that as far as threatening. And she mentioned that she had some comments from the previous owners, um, recorded maybe, apparently, uh, if that's legal. And, um, I spoke with them today, I can show you my phone log, they called me, Mr. Engel, so the Engel family owned this house from the sixties until they, until the senior Engel, uh, passed away and we were fortunate enough to buy their property. I spoke with the son who represented the trust in the sale, just maybe six hours ago today. Um, I told him clearly what we were doing, um, he knew that we were already playing on doing that, he'd, he'd received the notice and he said, that's completely fine. You know, we as a, not quoting verbatim, but paraphrasing, he said, we as a family discussed whether we cared to preserve the structure, whether any of us wanted to buy the house, there's the four siblings, um, they, they all agreed that none of them wanted to buy the house and they said, once we made that decision that we're not gonna buy the house, we recognize that everyone, whoever does buy this house will have all the rights to do whatever they want with it, is essentially what he told me today over the phone. Um, so, I presented the fact that I know them, um, I'm not sure what the other, other side is leaning on for, for their statements, but, um, just wanted to give you that context. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so does the board have any questions for staff, the applicant? I, I have, let's call up the, the architect, I have a question. And, part of the wind in my sails probably was taken away from one of the callers, I just had a quick question regarding, there's, I'm, I'm a real simple guy. Sure. So you have the top plate? Mm-hmm. And you have the, on the slope side, what is difference between the yellow line and the red line?
Uh, it's between one and a half and two feet, like one-eight or one-nine, somewhere around there. You mean, uh?
The difference between the red line and the yellow line on the top plate?
Yeah, it's between one and a half and two feet on each side, it's not exactly the same on each side.
Yeah.
It's like a, like I said, it's like a seesaw.
No, 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 this, this is what I'm asking you. Yeah. On the slope side, on the slope side, what's the difference between the red line and the yellow line?
Oh, um, on that side, uh, I don't have, it's, it's less than two feet, it's one-nine, one-eight, something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And they could build if they wanted to, up to thirty feet if they wanted to.
Oh, right, yeah.
Right.
We could have a giant roof if we wanted to, yeah.
Okay.
It's not the style, though.
Okay, so we're talking literally about less than twenty-four inches?
Yeah.
Okay. No further questions. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Ms. Wick.
Thank you so much, I just have one and this is, I, I just wanted to clarify something. If the lot was not sloped and the top plate was in compliance, we would not be here, is that correct to say? Like, there, there would not be a conditional use permit needed?
So, um, kind of two parts to that. So, the, the request as being made today, the top of plate height will still be in compliance, because it would be uh measured from that average grade. So, that's, just think of that imaginar- imaginary line, and they can just go twenty feet from there. Um, if, if it, if they didn't have that average grade, they would have to essentially follow that um, natural grade, or I'm sorry, existing grade. And, you know, one end, as discussed earlier, would be, s- interior-wise at least, uh, the ceiling would be lower than on the other side, where the lot is a little bit higher grade. I don't know if that answers your question.
Let me, maybe, let me add to the que- I think, if I'm understanding the question, so if this lot, like in the, the one exhibit showed, uh, and it was flat, and there was a parallel line that ran across it, we would still be taking a measurement of twenty feet. It's just that the zero that you start at, the reference point, would be, because it is flat, at the existing grade. With the CUP request, it allows you to take zero and start that zero at the average height, and then measure twenty feet to top of plate. They would be complying with that requirement. So, the if, the effect is that if it was, if it's, if it's flat, it's twenty feet. If it's approved with the CUP on a sloping lot, it's also still twenty feet for top of plate.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Nope. Do you have questions for the applicant?
No, I do not.
I declare the public, uh, the public hearing closed. The planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure?
I'm in support of the project.
Ms. Doherty.
I'm glad that they're not using SB nine and putting four housing units there. Um, it's a family. These are your neighbors. You're gonna have to live with them for a long time. So, I hope that everybody can really be able to live with each other in peace, so.
So, I drove by the property and, um, I, to be honest with you, I'm shocked that we're even here, to be honest with you. This is, uh, this is not, in my opinion, what we should be doing with our time. Um, I know that you have the right to appeal, but the code is so clear, and the buffer is huge. I mean, the setbacks and the, the garage and the, the height could be twen- thirty feet. And these folks are building twenty-six. I, I, I just, I, I know change is hard. I, I get it, but times have changed. People are working from home, people have families. This is a, I, this is what I do for a living, real estate. This is a stunning home. This is a beautiful home. It's not anything that's opulent, or, or, you know, I, obviously, it's al- always in the eyes of the beholder. But if you look at this rendering, and you look at what we're talking about, and what it took to get here because of that, I just think, wow, uh, we're neighbors, right? Um, I guess I have a question for staff. Do we have the authority or the power to rebate fees for this hearing?
No, and, and the, the board does not. The only, uh, uh, entity that could do that would be the city council. But just to clarify, Chair, a- and I apologize, I know you're still in your discussion, is, um, the way the code is currently set up, they have to apply for this use permit. They have to be in front of the board. Um, I just, 'cause I, I heard the word appeal. And so, the only appeal would be is if someone were to appeal your action to council. So, I just wanted to make sure.
So, it, so they're here?
They have to be here to request the permit, per the code, yeah.
Correct. So, um, I, I, obviously, I'm, uh, in agreement with staff's findings. Uh, the letter of the, the law has been, they're not doing anything outside. They're not asking for a variance. They're not asking for density that, which, in today's world, i- i- in this crazy world we're in, where we're building, you know, a hundred and forty-five units with seven parking spaces, and we're, we're SB nine, nining properties, where we can have no parking and four units in a lot, uh, just be neighbors. Bring yourself some pies during Thanksgiving and, and, and enjoy, enjoy your, your hospitable grounds, because things could be so much worse in today's world, and, and I just, you know, I, I just hate to see neighbor against neighbor, so, um, those, those are my comments.
I pretty much want to echo what council, um, excuse me, Board Member Rosati said. That we're talking about eighteen inches here, and again, we're not going above, we're not going above a roof height, we're not going above anything else. And the, the fact remains, and what my sticking point is, is if the lot was ever so slightly different, we wouldn't even be here tonight. And I, I echo what my fellow board members said, that I, I feel terrible that everybody has to be here tonight. Um, you know, I'm glad we can have the discussion, of course, but I let, let the family have their house.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to come out and speak. And, you know, I don't think very many people who were opposed to the project came out to speak, so thank you to everybody who came and took the time to do it.
And I know there's a lot of hurt feelings, so hopefully you guys can get past that, because you're gonna be neighbors, um, and probably for a long time. So, uh, do, do the, do the right things for each other, I hope to, so that way you can have a long-lasting relationship. So, why don't we call the, call the roll here?
I'm, I'm sorry, is there?
Oh, sorry, motion.
I don't know if there was a motion, yeah.
Uh, adopt a resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Burbank approving project number two-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-three-one-seven-eight. A conditional use permit to allow the plate height of a proposed single-family dwelling located at one-five-two-one East Alameda Avenue to be measured from the average grade in lieu of being measured from the existing grade pursuant to Burbank Municipal Code Section ten-dash-one-dash-six-zero-three-C-one, based on the findings of the fact and subject to the attached conditions of approval.
We have a motion? I'll second that motion.
Board Member Wick?
Wait, wait, we have a motion. I second it. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, go ahead, pull it.
Uh, Board Member Wick?
Yes.
Board Member Elric?
Yes.
Chair Rosati?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you all for coming tonight. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period may address the planning board on any matter concerning city business. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. For members of the public who wish to, to comment in person, please present a completed speaker card to the planning division staff if you wish to speak. For members of the public that wish to comment by telephone, please call eight-one-eight-two-three-eight-three-three-three-five to address the planning board. Callers will be placed in a queue until all persons co- comments have been received. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as, for a couple of minutes, as we get the first few callers through. Anyone wish to speak?
Uh, no callers yet, but we'll keep the line open for...
Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Come on up. Just, just state, you don't need to fill out a card, just state your name again.
Hey, uh, Pat Tonsky, hey. Um, just, uh, the character assassination from the people around has been kind of stunning. Um, I can prove otherwise if need be, that obviously isn't need be. Um, that was kind of odd. Um, you know, uh, basically, that's it.
We only care about the, we only care about the facts. We don't care about...
And the facts are, it was a small thing. That's why I bothered, asked us why I bothered to do it. And the people who I got signatures from this last weekend, they were too frightened to confront and to speak to and be against and come and show up. They were too frightened, because I've been spoken to by them before, just letting you know that. Whatever that means, I'm just gonna put that on record.
Okay, thank you.
There are no callers in the queue.
No callers, okay. I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for the board to receive a team development training from, uh, Mr. Yule, Chief Engagement Officer for Breaking the Chain Consulting.
And Chair Rosati, just, um, while Jim's coming up to the podium, um, there was a brief memo that was provided, uh, the training that we're all going through. This is, we're part of this training, as well as something that has been kind of progressing through the different boards and commissions. Uh, so, so, uh, Jim is here on, on the behest of the city manager and the council. Uh, and so, we're all here to undertake this training effort. Uh, and with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Uh, so again, my name's Jim Yule. I am the Chief Engagement Officer of Breaking the Chain Consulting, and you may be wondering, well, what is that? We are a leadership and team consulting company, where our sole purpose is to do one simple thing, which is to help build strong, purpose-driven, and cohesive teams. Get off that slide, 'cause, there we go. Um, uh, the two frameworks that we work off of in our organization is...
Excuse me one second, I'm sorry.
Can we close the door so we can hear?
It just closed.
It closed?
It just closed, yeah. Uh, the two frameworks that we use are, number one, we use a strengths, uh, strength, strengths-based leadership framework, and the other one that we use is organizational hea- health. I'll talk a little bit more about that today. Um, to kick us off, I wanted to, uh, wa- wanted the board to consider this. Every one of you, sitting here on this board, and the, and the entire board as a whole, you're in a story. All of you are in a story. Um, we got to live some of it here today. Um, and in the story of Burbank, um, and, and in any story, there's four main roles in any story that, uh, that you're in. What do you think those four roles are? If you think of any story that's ever been out there, what are those four roles?
Yeah.
Well, I read this, and it was...
Oh, you cheated on, oh, my gosh. That's good, you did your homework, good job.
Yeah, and it was like victim, hero, mentor, and I forgot what the last...
Close, close. Victim, villain.
Yes.
Hero, guide. Those are the four characters. And, and not only in life, but, so not only in these stories, but in life, we have a choice as to whether or not we play any one of those roles. And you're gonna see, as I kinda go over this, we all kinda fluctuate, um, and we've all played these roles in our lives. Um, so, every one of these roles have had, uh, I'm sorry, every one of these characters have had bad stuff happen to them. We've all had bad stuff happen to us. We've all faced adversity. Much of the, uh, listed items of adversity here on this slide. You know, as I guarantee you, there's people that have, uh, you know, are, are, inside this room, I guarantee you, there's people that have gone through adversity, um, tough times, if you're not going through a storm right now. Uh, it's either you just got done with one, um, or you're about ready to walk into one. The difference is, is how do we respond to those moments of adversity? And so, each one of these characters, you're gonna respond to it a little bit differently. So, here's, we're gonna go over each character here, uh, some characteristics of each character. Number one, you have the victim. Now, the victim's sole purpose in a story is to do two things. Number one, make the, uh, villain look especially bad, and make the hero, uh, look really good. Make, make them look very benevolent. The other characteristic is that they are actually the weakest and the most boring character in a story. Um, they also, um, the reason why they're kinda weak and boring, and nobody goes and rushes to a movie uh, to go see, I wonder what the, I wonder what the victim's gonna do next. Nobody rushes into that. Um, what the old, they really believe, and the reason why is, because they believe they have no fate, or no control. Fate is in control over everything. Um, and so that's, and they're basically just sitting there waiting to be rescued. Now, none of this is to mitigate that, I think we can all agree, there are real victims in this world. Uh, but this is, I'm, what I'm talking about is when we make the decision, that when we face disappointment, and we all face disappointment, you could see, even in this room today, there was some potential disappointment, or even some disappointment that happened. It's how we respond to that. I'm talking about the people who choose to feel like I've got no control over the situation, and so I don't, don't do anything about it, and I wait to get rescued. Now, let me ask you this. Have any of you in your life ever played the role of the victim? 'Cause I have. Anybody face disappointment, and you throw yourself a little pity party for a little bit? Nope, yeah, okay, I saw one head nod. All right, one honest person, yes. We, we've all done that. We've all kinda thrown ourselves a little pity party, felt sorry for ourselves, but finally, you know, okay, eventually, we pull ourselves out of that. Um, then you've got the villain. Now, the villain, uh, they have bad stuff that happened to them, but they respond, uh, one of two ways. Sometimes even both. Number one, they seek revenge. With the bad stuff that's happened to them, they are seeking revenge, or the next thing that they're looking for is, how can I make another human being feel small? Now, in, in life, anyone in this room, has anybody ever made somebody feel small? Okay, I saw a couple of head nods here. Yeah, we've all done that. If anybody's been maybe a parent, maybe even a spouse, you ever said that little cutting remark that maybe just made someone feel a little bit small? Uh, maybe that sarcastic comment, or maybe you didn't actively seek revenge, but did you, maybe in your head, maybe go, man, I, I hope this person doesn't get this, or I hope, hope something bad happens to this person, or, or it doesn't work out the way that they want it. We've all done that. We've all played that role in life. Not a great role to play. Um, the victim and the villain, they share really two common characteristics, and here's what they are. Number one, uh, they only cause problems. They do it for different reasons, but they only cause problems. And number two, um, they never grow. They never transform. They never get better. Uh, victims and villains tend to stay in a story, they tend to stay right where they're at. Then you've got the hero. Uh, the hero, uh, they're a little bit different. They're actually the second weakest character in the story. Now, we said the, the victim is the first weakest character in the story. So, it's kinda odd that you would think that a, uh, the hero is actually a weak character, but they actually are. When they first start out, does a hero really know what they're doing? Like, let's take, for example, maybe, uh, are you familiar with Star Wars? Get some head nods here, okay? So, does Luke know what he's doing in the beginning? He's got no clue, no clue. But what makes him interesting, even though he's the second weakest character in the story, he's the most interesting. And the reason why he's the most interesting is he or she knows what they want. And so, they go after it, and they're willing to face the pain and face the struggle and face the adversity to get what it is that they want. That's why we're drawn toward heroes. Now, for the board here, have any of you played the role of the hero, where you knew what you wanted, you went after it, and you faced the pain and the adversity to go, uh, to actually achieve that?
Sure.
Yeah? Give me an example, Ms. It's, is it, uh, uh, Elric?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't want to.
I'll, I'll give you an example, ev- it's just even for me. Getting a degree, going and getting that master's degree. Um, you gotta face some of the pain, uh, you just fa- face some of the adversity. Si- make your sacrifices to go get what it is that you want. So, if I throw that as an example, can you, can maybe the board share with me an example of something that you've struggled through, and you made it happen, you went after it? You played the role of the hero? Okay, this is the interactive part of the, uh, of the presentation.
I think it's just, mm, it's probably too personal for, for some of them, they just don't wanna share, so...
Okay.
I second that.
Ms. Wick, I, I understand this is your first, this is your first board?
It is.
For me? Congratulations and welcome, by the way. Um, my guess is you probably put in for this, right? You played the role of the hero. You played the role of the hero, you saw something you wanted to go after, and you went after it, and you achieved it. So, something as simple as that. We all play, we all play the role of the hero, day in and day out. We do do that. Um, then you've got, whoops. The awesome thing about heroes is they transform. They grow, they change, they learn from their experience, and they become even better. And then you have a guide. Anybody know who this chap is?
Strongest character in the story.
Right, but anyone know who this, this person is?
Oh, I don't know.
No idea? Well, this is Sir Walter Raleigh. Anyone know who he is? He scaled Everest, oh, I'm sorry, totally said that wrong. Sir Edmund Hillary. Now, does that ring a bell, maybe, for anyone? Yeah, who is he? No, no? I heard someone say it, I heard a yes.
So, you can...
First person to scale Everest. He's the first person to scale Everest. Now, he gets the credit for scaling Everest. Did he do this alone? No? You know who he did it with? Any idea? He did have a sherpa, and there was a specific sherpa that helped him. And that specific sherpa was this, this was Tenzing Norgay. Um, this was his humble, hearty guide. Um, and that's what a good sherpa is, is, uh, they are, um, a Napoleon sherpa, is that they are tried and true and tested. They have walked those mountains before. Um, they know what it takes, and so they guide and give this, give the hero, in this case, it was Sir Edmund Hillary, gave him everything that he needed to know so that he would succeed. But Sir Edmund Hillary wasn't the only one who scaled that mountain. He had to do the vast majority of the work, but he didn't do it alone. In a story, the guide is the strongest character in the story. They're also the strongest character, they're also, they're the strongest because also they're the wisest. They've been there, they've done that. They're also the most empathetic. Because they've been there and done that, this guide, every guide, knows how hard something is that the hero is trying to achieve. They're also the most humble character in the story. Because in a story, when it comes to the hero, who's it all about for the hero?
The hero.
It's about the hero. For the guide, who's it all about?
The hero.
It's about the hero. It's not about them, it's all about the hero. In fact, all they want to do, because they were once the hero and they understand how hard and painful things were, all they want to do is help other heroes. So, I want to ask you, as a board, in the story of Burbank, in the story of Burbank, in the story of this commission right here, I think we can agree, you're not villains and you're not victims. But in that, in this story, which role are you? What role is this panel?
Hero.
What do you think? I say if one says hero, you're nodding your head no.
I just think we're an independent body with independent thoughts that kind of are able to garner direct information and spit it out.
Okay.
And sometimes we agree and sometimes we don't.
I'm going to submit to you in this story, you're the guide. You are the guides. That you're here, that the heroes, actually, were sitting here today. It's the members of the community. They're the ones that are putting in the hard work, they're the ones that got to go.
The staff, the staff is the guides.
Great example.
The staff is the ones that prep the work and do all the painful measuring and diagnostics for these packets. And we're just kind of evaluating their, their hard work.
Yeah, and sometime, exactly. Sometimes they're the guide, they're guiding.
They're the sherpas.
There you go. And you're offering the city guidance as well. In fact, the whole reason why many of you have chosen this is because you wanted to guide, you wanted to give back, you wanted to contribute. So in a story, when we decide to play these two roles, and by the way, the biggest mistake when sometimes people are in leadership positions is they position themselves as the wrong character in the story. Because if we position ourselves as the hero too long, who's it about?
Yourself.
It's about me. And this whole thing is not about, I know for you up there, it's not about just you. It is about, let's, how do we make this community the best possible community that we can make it? That's what it's all about, and the guide is there to help that. And the heroes are, sometimes the heroes are the staff, because they're out there making these directions and these things happen that are maybe sometimes coming from the board as well. So the question starts to become is how do I use all my talents, all my creativity, all my knowledge, all my experiences? And how do I use it to become the hero, number one, that I was meant to be? But even better, and the better question is this. How do I take all my talents, my strengths, my know-how, my creativity, and use it to be the guide that I ought to be? So, switching gears here, here's the sole, sole purpose of what we're here to talk about today. And I'd love a volunteer, somebody who would be willing to read this purpose right here. Mr. Elrich.
Okay.
Can you read this out loud for me?
Yes. Build a purpose that aligns your team around something that really matters.
How the heck were you able to read that?
Because your brain only processes the first letter and the last letter of a word and reads it.
You clearly read ahead.
Yes, I did.
Well done, well done. So, Ms. Wick, could I maybe see if you could pull this one off here? So yes, that's what he read here, this is what it was supposed to say.
Yeah.
But let's, let's read why. Ms. Wick, would you be able to read out loud? Yeah, you got this, you got this.
According to research at Cambridge University, it doesn't matter what order the letters in the word are, the only important thing is the first and last letter be in the right place. The rest can be a total mess and you could still read without a problem. This is because the human mind does not read every letter itself, but the word as a whole. Amazing, huh?
It's fascinating, and I think what this really illustrates is that we are meaning machines. The brain is constantly trying to, it's craving meaning, it's craving purpose. It's trying to figure things out all the time. I think this is a great setup and a great segue into why purpose is so important. Purpose is everything. It's everything for organizations, it's everything for teams. I'd even go so far as to say it's important for our families, which by the way, is the most important team that you will ever be on, is your family. But this is a team here. Every time that this board convenes, you're a team. And we want to start asking ourselves, what is our purpose? What is our objective? Every one of you here, we're at a crossroad. There was, there were decisions that had to be made today. And one of the great things about having a solid, clearly defined, easy, short, easily memorized purpose statement as to why we're here, what our purpose is, that starts to guide us in our decision-making. It becomes the beacon that guides us on every decision that we make, every crossroad that we make. We could say, okay, am I going to vote this way, am I going to go this way? Does it match our purpose? Yes or no? And if it's yes, then we know which way we're going. It becomes a very critical piece of what we do. So, yes, we are meaning machines. There it is. And why is this so important? Because we have a major purpose deficit going on, at minimum in the United States, I would say worldwide. But just, if we just take where we live in the United States, we have a major purpose deficit going on. Look at what's happening to depression rates. And by the way, this was going up before COVID. This was going up way before COVID, and same thing with suicide rates. And the same things with workplace disengagement rates, which any of you have any idea what the current disengagement rate is in the United States right now, in the workplace, just at work? What percentage of employees do you think are disengaged?
A lot.
A lot, yeah.
Seventy?
Yeah, it's, it's about sixty-eight right now. Sixty-eight's the number right now. The best it's ever gotten down to, which was right when the pandemic just happened, so it was like March and April, it got down to about sixty-one percent. It was the best we've ever been able to see. Gallup has been tracking this for twenty-two years. And the best that we've been able to eke out is sixty-one percent in the workplace. I'll submit to you, a big part of that is because of a lack of purpose in our organizations and in our teams. Here are some great quotes, by the way, that I think really underscore the importance of purpose. William Barclay, he said, "Two of the greatest days in your life, number one, the day that you are born, and the day that you get and understand and you know why." That's, those are, those are two great days in your life. Viktor Frankl, he was a Nazi war camp survivor, wrote one of the most significant books out there called Man's Search for Meaning. In this book, he says this. "Once an individual's search for meaning is successful, it not only renders him happy, but also gives him the capacity to cope with suffering." Purpose can be a very, very significant piece in getting us through suffering. It's a big part of what kept him alive. Frederick Nietzsche, a nihilist of all people, he even understood the purpose of, I'm sorry, understood the importance of purpose when he said, "He who has a why to live for can bear almost any how." Anything that's thrown at your way, that purpose can keep you grounded. And I guarantee you, this board at times will face adversity from time to time, and purpose can keep us grounded. Nick Vojtich, born with no arms, no legs, no, no reason why, it just happened. He said, one of the things, you know, before I get to the quote here, you know, he says, you know, "I believe in miracles." "I do," he's all, "I have a pair of, a pair of shoes in my closet just in case I get that miracle that I want." But he says, you know, "If I haven't gotten that miracle yet, but if I can't be a miracle, or if I can't get the miracle that I want, I can go be a miracle for somebody else." Again, there's that kind of that guide component. This person has a lot of cred, who's going to have more credibility speaking about adversity and challenge? Me standing up here with my four limbs? Or a very happy, positive, encouraging, enthusiastic leader like Nick Vojtich, who gets up there and talks about his adversity and shows, hey, I'm no superhero, but if I can do it, you can, you can go through things? So you start to see that purpose becomes the passport to inspiration and performance. For not just us as individuals, but it also becomes the passport to inspiration and performance for our teams. Now, you heard me talk earlier about this idea of organizational health, and here's what I mean by that. Most of our teams, so if we take this, this is a team here, this board here is a team. We have very smart people sitting in here, very smart people. In fact, this would be pretty much the definition of smarts. If we've got a team of people who know strategy, that maybe know marketing, that know budgeting, or know how to use information and technology. Do I've got people on this board that know how to do these things?
Yes.
Yes, I do, hundred percent. And if you didn't have it, what could you do?
Something else.
Find some crazy consultant like me to come in. You pay, you pay someone like me to come in and do it, or some consultant that can come in and do it. If we don't have the smarts or the know-how, we just pay, we would be able to pay or contract somebody to do it. Or go research it and find it somewhere else, right? But that's only half the equation when it comes to a team. Teams also got to be healthy. And here's what I mean by health. And if we look at, if we look at, you know, even where you're, maybe if, if you're employed somewhere else, if you look at those teams or any other team that you've been on, where maybe you've been employed, or maybe a sports team that you've been a part of, or any other team that you've been on, start asking yourself, do these teams meet these standards? Which, I'm going to list these five characteristics and see how well maybe we're doing in our organizations. A healthy team, number one, would have minimal politics. And by minimal politics, I mean minimal self-serving agendas, because that's what politics is. Politics happens not just in government, it happens in the home, it happens in the workplace. It's self-serving agendas, that's, that's politics. And we want to minimize that in a healthy team. The next one would be minimal confusion, which means we know with the utmost clarity why we exist. What's our purpose? What are our values? What's our, what's our beacon that's going to guide us? And you'll notice if you get the first two right, if you get those two right, it has a dramatic impact on the next three. Which is a healthy team has high morale, high productivity, and low attrition, which means we're keeping and retaining our best people. Now, if we look around the world today, how well do you think our, how healthy do you think our, most of our teams are? No.
Not good.
Not, not very, not very unfortunate, which is, by the way, really indicated by the disengagement rates that we see. So today, I want to talk to you about this really key piece that does have an impact on the next three, which is purpose. Because that's what purpose is, it clarifies our existence, it clarifies why we're here to do what we're here to do. So, when we get health right, it starts to multiply how well we do the smart stuff. It multiplies how well we strategize, how well we market, how well we use technology, how well we budget and finance. Becomes a huge, huge multiplier, multiplier, because people are willing to bring forward their best ideas, because I know I've got a team of people that are tight, cohesive and strong, and we have each other's backs. So, I want to ask, go around the room here. What is the purpose of? Well, this is not the Burbank Police Commission, wrong, should have changed that one. What is the purpose of the planning board?
The purpose of the planning board is we are an advisory and decision-making board to help guide planning decisions within the city.
Okay. What is the purpose, as you see it, sir?
Ditto. We advise our council on, on decisions and codes and, and the relationship that has to our city. And, and sometimes, members of the public.
Okay. Mr. Elrich?
Same, but I also think we listen and base our decisions based on the members of the public as well.
Okay. Now, I would say that what you mentioned is what you do. That's what this board does. But purpose really starts to answer the question of why. Why do we do it? Why do we pop our heads off the pillow? Wake up this morning, go through all day, probably go to our day jobs, and then come here for this meeting, beginning at five o'clock, and here we are now. It's eight, eight o'clock? Now we're here at eight o'clock. That's the thing we want to start, and we want to have everybody who's in total alignment on, on why we do it. That's what starts to separate great teams, because what you do here is the same thing that they're doing in Hoboken, New Jersey. It's the same thing that's happening in Albuquerque, New Mexico. What we do is the same thing. What they do in this planning and community development department, it's the same thing that they do everywhere else, but what starts to separate it, separate us from the herd and make us unique, is why we do it. And the teams that understand with the utmost clarity why we do it, and that we can all say why we do it, that becomes something that's really, really special, starts to guide us. So if I can throw up this slide back up, please? Thank you. So, here's just some interesting stats regarding purpose that we, that we know about. This is like hot off the press like this year. Only forty-one percent of employees know what their organization stands for and what differentiates them from other organizations. Again, purpose becomes that driving force that's a differentiator. Only thirty-three percent of employees agree that their company or their organization's purpose actually makes them feel like their job's important. Key word there. Purpose should generate a feeling. It should generate some type of excitement. There should be an emotion, an emotional connection to it. Only twenty-six percent of millennials, and we now, we aren't just dealing with millennials now, now we've got Gen Z in the workplace right now. But only twenty-six percent of millennials have heard someone in the workplace actually talk about how their daily work connects to the organizational purpose. Remember, the brain craves meaning. We demonstrated that right in the very beginning, the brain's constantly trying to figure things out. Where do I fit in the equation? Where do my talents and creativity and ideas, where does it fit into this whole equation? And the brain's trying to figure that out, and that's why we have to have leaders that remind us of that purpose over and over and over again. So why does all this matter? Because there's an intimate connection between employee engagement, how engaged people are, how engaged a community might be, and purpose. It's, there's a huge, huge connection. We know that from the research. So what do I mean by engagement? That oftentimes comes up. Here's what I mean, and here's the best way I can describe it for you. The best way I can describe it for you is, is head, heart and hands. I have an engaged person, I have an engaged board. If I've got people who are bringing the very best of their cognitive ideas, like they are cognitively in the game, they're focused, they're paying attention. I've got somebody who also is emotionally connected to why we're doing it. They, they actually like the people that they're working with and like the work that they do. They feel emotionally connected to it. So there's, there's this emotional component to it. And then finally, I'm willing to bring my hands, which is a great symbol or illustration of our unique talents, our unique strengths that we bring to the table. If I've got somebody who's willing to bring the best of their head, heart and hands, and align it with a unique shared purpose, I've got an engaged person. I've got an engaged employee. Now, we talked about the millennials here briefly. Of all the generations in the workplace right now, which we don't have any numbers yet, quite yet on Gen Z yet, but let's take millennials. We've got Gen X, we've got boomers. We actually, we also have traditionalists that are in the workplace, so those are people that are born like before nineteen forty-five, they're still in the workplace too. You have, have some left. So, of all the generations, which one do you think is the most disengaged?
Millennials.
It is the millennials. It is. See, we knew it, we knew we were right, right? We can blame all our woes on the millennials, right? Not so fast, not so fast. Because Gen Xers, they're sixty-eight percent disengaged. So we stink just a little bit less when it comes to disengagement. I'm a Gen X, that's, that's where, that's the best my generation can eke out is sixty-eight percent. Now, let's go to the boomers. Where do you guys think they are?
Fifty.
No, they're sixty-seven. They are at sixty-seven, so they stink a little bit less than Gen X. The best we can eke out, the best that we can eke out are the traditionalists at a whopping fifty-five percent. That's the best that we've been able to get in the workplace, and especially when it comes, it comes to generational differences.
They're not in the workplace.
Some of them still are. And I'll give you an example, where I work, we have volunteers. Many of our volunteers there, and, and they're, they're workers. They're, they're workers, they're doing, they're doing stuff as well. So they're, they're still there. And this interesting stat here, seventy-one percent of millennials, though, said that they would stay. They will not leave, they will not go if they knew what their company stood for. And, and they knew how their company made a difference, especially when it came to their competitors. So employee disengagement, ladies and gentlemen, it is not, and I repeat, not a generational problem. I know we love to blame the generation behind us, but it is not a generational problem. This is an organizational problem, this is a, an environment problem, a workplace environment problem. So, because things went a little bit later with all the work that you had to do. You know what? I'm going to show this video, I am going to show this one, the second one I'm not going to show. I want to show this because I, I think it perfectly illustrates how important it is to get purpose right. That maybe, just maybe, I'm going to suggest that if this was a truly a purpose-driven organization at that time, that maybe this scandal would have been avoided. Does anybody remember the Wells Fargo scandal? Happened pretty recently.
Zelle?
What's that?
The one about Zelle?
No.
Oh, that's another one.
Fees?
It was, yeah, fees. It was, yeah, fees. And opening false and fraudulent accounts. So what Wells Fargo had done is they had set up numbers that their, uh, uh, bank associates had to, had to hit, yet these numbers were so unrealistic, it wasn't even attainable, so they had, basically what they concocted is cre- creating false accounts. They would just take maybe a piece of your information, a piece of Ms. Wick's information, and then they would just open up these accounts. Um, all for the purpose of trying to meet the numbers. I want you to pay attention when you, when you listen to this case study here, just pay attention to something that the CEO says. You're gonna, you're not gonna hear him speak it, but you're gonna hear somebody quote what it was that he said. If you're gonna play that right now, and if we can just make sure that the volume's high enough, please?
It was the norm to just open sales unethically, it was just what we were taught, and we just did it.
More than six months after the fake account scandal damaged Wells Fargo's reputation, there's been very little accountability at the top. Attorney Michael Cade represents former Wells Fargo employees.
I can understand if one district manager is putting pressure on the people below him or her. But if this is going on nationwide, you would think that there is somebody above the district manager that is putting pressure on the DM to get something done.
When news of the scandal spread, CEO John Stumpf left the bank following a fiery congressional grilling.
It's gutless leadership.
And so did the head of the retail bank, Carrie Tolstedt. The bank is now holding back some executive compensation, but both Stumpf and Tolstedt walked away with millions tied to a rising stock price boosted by aggressive sales tactics. Stumpf said the bank never told employees to commit fraud, but many former workers say the pressure led to that.
We had a lot of pressure, remember, just as a teller, you know, we had the bankers just on our backs, and then
To get the client.
To get the client that I had as a teller, uh, standing up, to get them sitting down with the banker. We would look at a phone number and maybe misconstrue one of the numbers, oh, is your home number still at one, two, three, four, even though on the screen it said one, two, three, four, five? And so it was just anything to get them to our desk.
In fact, she claims almost everyone at the branch, herself included, was either lying to customers or complicit in it. Another former employee explained how simple it was to open a fake account.
So it's pretty much like you signing a blank paper, and then the rest of the information is filled in, saying, oh, this is just to reopen, you know, your savings account, or reactivate your savings account. But, you know, when the customer leaves, they could put, put ten accounts on there, and then open it, and the signature is there. And even if the customer calls to complain, well, Mr. Customer, your signature is there.
At best, customers with unauthorized or unnecessary accounts were confused and hassled. At worst, they were hit with overdraft fees, and some saw their credit scores suffer.
How did you get the idea in your head that if I don't do this unethical thing, I'm gonna lose my job? What made you think that?
I mean, they would just tell us that, that, that it was just, it was verbalized. We just, again, always had pressure from management, upper management. They were witness to what, what we were doing, I mean, they coached us, because they had to sign off on everything.
Regulators found similar activity across the country. According to a new Wells Fargo investigation, runaway sales practices had been an issue since at least two thousand two, and John Stumpf admitted he was aware of the problem since two thousand thirteen.
I remember being, uh, uh, at least making impression upon me in, in two thousand thirteen.
So for six years, regular meetings with one of your most important managers, those discussions, you have no recall that that ever came up?
I, I, not i- in, in the way I had in two thousand thirteen.
But the bank waited until two thousand sixteen before doing away with the aggressive sales goals. Wells Fargo says, this is in the past now. Its number one priority is rebuilding trust, and the bank has made fundamental changes to reduce the pressure on workers and ensure customers are aware of new accounts opened. The bank's paid a hundred and eighty-five million dollars so far in fines, although it still faces more than a dozen investigations and lawsuits. But just like the financial crisis, jail time for senior executives is unlikely.
Has Wells Fargo suffered enough? Have, has it?
No, absolutely not. As soon as I see five or six people go to jail for a very long time, federal prison, I would say that our system of government is doing something about this.
Who should carry the weight of what happened?
You know, there was always some, you know, obviously some guilt, you know, I'm human, um, but it was just the stress of, of losing your job every day. I mean, the company, it was very sales-driven, and they didn't care how they got it, at what cost.
I don't know if you caught it, because again, it was somebody quoting what the CEO said, it wasn't, you didn't hear him say it per se. But did you, did you notice, did, did you, did you catch something that he said that was really key? The bank never told the employees to commit fraud. Well, they didn't tell them not to. That's where purpose becomes so, so important and so key. If we can switch back over to the, uh, PowerPoint slide? Yeah, that's what, it, it starts to, you start to see that this was maybe more of a sales-driven culture, and you heard her say it, you heard the, the lady, um, who was kinda blacked out there, you heard her say, this is very much a sales-driven culture. That's what they were driven by, rather than purpose, we're here to do some common good, something good for the, for the welfare of other human beings. You didn't necessarily hear that at all, but that they were very sales-driven. And when you have a good purpose statement, what it does is it helps to keep us, be number one, inspired. Human beings are not just meaning machines, they're also inspirational machine, machines. You know, you can have a rule that says you can or can't do something, uh, but let me ask you this, have you ever been inspired by a rule? No? No, uh, rules don't inspire us, but purpose and values do. Um, and you could see some of the, the purpose and the values of the decisions that came out today, as I was just sitting here and, and listening as, as was being debated, uh, as to what was gonna happen with a particular home. You heard, you could hear and feel certain values coming out, in each and every one of you, it was coming out. But purpose keeps us, keeps us inspired, it keeps us focused, it keeps us driven, most importantly, it keeps every one of us aligned. And what they, what Wells Fargo was aligned with is they were aligned with sales. They weren't aligned with purpose, they didn't have something to guide their decisions. Now, you heard me briefly talk about, heard me briefly talk about rules, that number one, ru- rules are good, you have them, you, you debated some of those today. You're talking about the code, the building code today. These rules are important, they're there to keep us safe. Um, but rules also have limitations. Human beings are pretty, some pretty crafty people. What are human beings always trying to figure out regarding the rules?
Skirting them.
How can I get around them? And they're pretty ingenious creatures, they, they will find ways to get around the rules, right? So it has its limitations. You know, uh, s- and, and here's the thing with rules too, is maybe if you wanna hold somebody accountable regarding something they didn't do. If you ask them, sometimes they'll respond, rule didn't say I had to. But purpose, if you confront people with purpose, and you confront people with values and say, hey, what you did, what you didn't do didn't meet what we believe at our very core, of what we believe is an organization. That's why, that's why, that's why we're holding you accountable, that's why we're having you take ownership over this right now. That becomes a different matter altogether. Most mission statements, and by the way, sometimes, we confuse mission with, with purpose, and, and I wanted to clarify something. Wh- what do you think is the difference between mission and purpose?
Uh, what you wanna do is your mission and your purpose is, I don't know.
Why you're doing it.
Yeah, it's our why, right? So remember when I asked you? I said, hey, a- and you, every one of you said, hey, this is, you gave an example, but it was, it was what you do. That's pretty much the mission, what you got, what you had essentially, each one of you had described was, this is what we do, this is our mission. Missions can change from time to time, by the way. Uh, and I'll give you an example, I happen to work in the policing industry. Um, and the mission has changed in, in the thirty-some years that I've been doing this. And we probably, you know, when I first started, uh, would never have dreamed that we would be dealing with uh, homelessness the way that we're dealing with it, that, that wasn't a policing issue, that's not what we're gonna be dealing with, that's not our thing. Missions change, missions evolve. Should purpose ever change? What do you think? Should purpose, our why, why we pop our heads off the pillow to go do what we do? That should be a constant. It should be the beacon, this, this should be the thing that guides us, why we do it, so we wanna give, take some thought, uh, behind why we do that. So if we can throw the, uh, the PowerPoint slide back up real quick here. Is that most mission statements, and I know you, you've all been around them, trust me. Most mission statements, I would say, meet the standard of, of being blather. Um, and here's what I mean by blather. That most miss- mission statements are some convoluted, jargony, easily forgotten, uninspiring, all-encompassing declaration of intent. And I'm gonna give you an example of one. Um, and remember I said that there should be like an emotional component to, to, to like purpose? I'd love to get a volunteer from one of you, if, if maybe you would, in your most excited voice, read the mission statement of, it's not their mission statement now, but this was once their, their mission statement, anybody wanna excitedly read this to me?
Oh, my god.
Yeah, exactly, how about? So, I'm not gonna make you do that.
Oh, I was about to.
Yeah, I'm not, uh, here's the thing, though, if you did read it, if you did read it, it goes on. It's not done, it keeps going. And I love that, that, how it keeps going is it says this at the very end. Note, please refer to the company's website for its extensive series of company statements, including working environment plus our shared values and beliefs. So that becomes the afterthought. It's the last thing that we mention, oh, and you gotta go somewhere else to go find that. Instead of saying right up front, this is who we are, this guides every decision that we make. This is taken straight off the internet. Um, I don't know where this was, I don't remember where it was, but this was a mission statement from a police department, so I'm gonna read this to you here. We are committed to providing professional quality police services to the city. We take resp- we take responsi- we take the responsibility to maintain order, protect life and property, and to improve the quality of life for all citizens, members of the community, and visitors. And the statement goes on for another sixty words. A total of ninety-seven words. Do you think this inspires the police officers that are out there that are doing really, that are supposed to be doing really, really good, purposeful, purpose-driven work? Is that gonna inspire them to go do that? Do you think the people at Kellogg's with that mission statement, that number one, that that was so, something they so easily memorized, it was so a part of their heart, that it directed everything that they did? No way, no way. So, a purpose statement should get you excited. I think we can agree that those statements did not necessarily get us incredibly excited, and our organizations are replete with statements like that. So, now, have any of you seen this movie?
Braveheart.
Yeah, most people have seen this film. There's a key moment, and, and this is the scene I was gonna show, but I'm not gonna do it. Uh, just 'cause, again, you've had a long night thus far. But you remember that key scene where he's rallying up all the Scotsmen? Because they're gonna go against the world's greatest army at that time, which is the English army. And the Scots were tired of all the rape and the murder and the pillaging that was happening to their people under English rule. And they said, this, th- this day, we're gonna stand up, we're gonna fight, but they've done that before. They've done it many, many times before, where they would at least create the illusion that they were about to fight. But on this day, things were different. And usually what happened is they, they would meet in the middle of the field, they would meet with the, uh, English nobles. The, the English nobles would give the terms of the king, which they would usually say, hey, we're gonna give some of you Scottish nobles, we're gonna give you some land. We're gonna give you some, uh, hereditary right. And then you guys just go, go run off, and we'll spare, spare us some bloodshed for at least today. And that's what, uh, everyone who came together, that's what they thought was gonna happen that day. But then this guy, William Wallace, comes along. And he's getting everyone ra- uh, rallied up to take on the English that day. Do you remember what it was that he said? You can take our lives, but what?
Not our freedom.
But you cannot take our freedom. You can take our lives, but you cannot take our freedom. Literally, what you heard right there is you heard a purpose statement, if you actually rephrased it just a little bit, if you rephrased it a little, little bit, what he was really saying is this, freedom is worth dying for. Because some, some of them are saying, he's like, no, we're not, we're not gonna go against this, and one of the things he was rallying them up to believe is that, hey, we may live today, but man, on your, on your, on your dying bed, if you, you had this moment to do something to fight for our freedom, how would you wanna be remembered? He gives this very eloquent speech, and this is what it essentially comes down to, here's our purpose, freedom is worth dying for. Now, what if William Wallace said this instead? Here's my six-point plan for liberating the sovereign nation of Scotland from the tyranny of England. Would that have the same effect?
No.
No. Let's take, now, there's maybe some debate on how all this went, right? Obviously, this is a cinematic rendition of something that happened historically, but how about this one? I have a dream. And when somebody paints out vividly what that dream looks like, and explains example after example after example of what this dream looks like in his mind. Or what if he said this instead? I have a ten-point plan. Which is what you hear so many people say and talk about, right? It's not inspiring, it's not inspiring at all. So, most mo- mission, most organizations, most teams, they have some type of mission statement. Most people don't feel like they're on a mission, like they're, they're on, on some really purpose-driven mission. And again, we wanna evoke a feeling. Earlier, we talked about story. What we wanna do, what a good purpose statement does, is it invites people into our story. You have a story that's going on right here, and you wanna be able to invite people into this story. Every story has seven key elements, this comes from a gentleman by the name of Donald Miller. Every story has seven key elements, I mentioned Star Wars, Star Wars earlier. So, element number one is you have a main character. Who's the main character in Star Wars?
Anakin.
It's Luke. Um, it is, it is, it is Luke, right? And every character has a problem. What's Luke's problem? Let's take, go to the very first one. What is it, Ms. Wick?
Save the galaxy.
Right, yeah, there's this, there's this evil empire out there that wants to destroy the world, right? That's the problem. And so he meets a guide, who's the guide?
Yoda.
Before that.
Oh, I don't know.
The old guy.
Yeah, the old guy.
The shipper.
That would be Obi-Wan Kenobi, later becomes Yoda, because he, he, he passes along in the first one, right? Sorry, spoiler alert, did I ruin that for anyone? So, he meets Obi-Wan Kenobi, who then gives him a plan. What's the plan?
Become a Jedi?
To become a Jedi. He's like, hey, Luke, I'm a Jedi, I'm gonna show you how to be a Jedi, I got this lightsaber, in fact, I have an extra one here, you can bu- you can use this, and I'm gonna show you how to use it. And then, now does Luke, remember, we said heroes don't know what they're doing at first, right? So, he needs to be called to action, he needs to be encouraged, because he doesn't know what he's doing, he needs a little bit of inspiration and encouragement, and that's what the guide does for him. So, yeah, he has to have some of these mentoring conversations, Luke, you're ready to go, you've got this, you can go do this, right? And then what a good guide does is they will paint a picture of, here's, here's the two possible results. Luke, if you don't do, if you do do this, it's gonna be great, you're gonna save the world, they're gonna write songs and poems about you, you're gonna remember, be remembered by all people. Or if you don't do it, Luke, and if you don't succeed, this is what's gonna happen to the world. They paint the two consequence, or the two consequences. The problem with most people in most organizations is they position themselves as the wrong person in the story. And what we wanna do is, we wanna make sure that we position ourselves correctly, and we wanna invite, and we wanna create a purpose statement that draws people into our story. Look at this great thing that we get to be a part of, where we're gonna save the world, just like Luke. Your purpose statement, I mean, this is how, this is literally how excited people should be, to, to get here and do what we're doing right now. We should be, should actually conjure up feelings where we're this excited. But the only way that it does that is a good purpose statement is short, easily memorized, it is idealistic, yet, most importantly, it is true with a capital T. So right now, I'm just gonna go over the very last key elements here. These are the characteristics, or this is, if you want to go down that road, down the road, we're not gonna create a purpose statement in here, there's no way, we don't have the time to be able to do that. If we were to follow this process, then I'm gonna show you here real quick on how we get there. That can easily be done anywhere between two to four hours. It's a really, really cool process. And so if you, if that's a journey that you wanna go down, a great way to start thinking about our purpose statements, whether it be for our family members, for our teams, maybe with our day jobs, or here for this board right here. What we wanna start thinking is, of, is, start thinking of your purpose statement as a counterattack. It's the counterpunch to what's wrong out there in the world. That's a great way to start thinking about, like, what is, what is this board, or, or, or what is this commission that counterattack to, that, that, that might be wrong in the world? What do we stand for, or what do we stand against? That's a great way to start thinking of a purpose statement. Or there's this, maybe start thinking about who your enemy is. Now, I have an enemy, as part of my business, I have a distinct enemy. Anyone have a guess as to what that enemy is? I'm out there to defeat this enemy every day, because I'm there to build strong purpose, healthy, cohesive, uh, s- strong, healthy, cohesive, and purpose-driven teams, but there's an enemy that's in my way, anyone know who that is? I talked a little bit about it. It's disengagement. That's my enemy. I know who my enemy is, I've identified it, and my whole purpose statement is to go defeat that enemy. Think of this, maybe finish this sentence, it's just plain wrong that, what? That this is happening in organizations, or that this is happening That this is happening in organizations, or that this is happening in in uh, planning commissions and boards that we're here to maybe come up, come and fix and make even better. What are we potentially saving people from? It's a great way to start thinking about it. Does it conjure up a feeling? There's gotta be an emotional connection to a purpose statement. Does it define a destination? This is where we're headed. This is where we're going. How do we make the world? How are we contributing to making this world a better place? Another great way to think about it. And a great purpose statement is not just a differentiator, although it is, although it really is, and it should be. Um, it's a clarifier. It clarifies who we are. It clarifies why we do what we do. It should be an inspiring call to action. And that inspiring call to action should, a good purpose statement should begin from the inside out. I'm gonna give an example of that. Here shortly. And again, it should be idealistic and it should be true. So you're gonna hear me talk about this term, begin from the inside out. So, we're not gonna look at that. When I say this, this idea that a purpose statement should begin from the inside out, what I mean is it should be just as applicable to us as a team. As it is to the heroes we're out there to serve. That's what I mean by that. Now. Let's take a look at this one here. We looked at these ninety seven words here of what this. Police mission statement was. But what if you had a mission statement that looked like this, or a purpose statement that looked and read something like this? We exist to make others feel safe. Not think they're safe, not create the illusion of safety, but actually when we show up, that people feel physically safe. Um, and not only just physically safe, but psychologically and emotionally safe, that they could actually talk to us and tell and tell us the truth, and we're not gonna make them feel small. And not listen to them. Now, I show this picture here cuz this, these are two members of one of my teams. This is our team purpose statement. We collectively uh, created it, did it together. And this is what we basically were able to to uh, to just. Put together in just very short succinct, idealistic, but true statement of this is why we pop our heads off the pillow to do what we do every day. We collaboratively came up with this. And this idea of doing it from the inside out, if you ask any member of my team. Who this purpose statement first applies to, they'll all give you the same answer to us. We've gotta make each other feel safe. We've gotta have each other's backs, not just physically, that's the easy part, but psychologically, like we don't gossip. We don't trash talk one another. We don't put each, put down each other's ideas. We're gonna challenge each other, but we don't, we're not gonna. Uh, be condemning ideas in in front of people so that people, so that people don't bring up really, really good ideas. No, we want the good ideas to come forward. We're not gonna tear each other down. So it first must apply to us, because if we get it right on the inside, now we're best equipped to get it right on the outside. And here's some of the beautiful things that they did. You got these two uh, officers here. Uh, on one Sunday morning, I put them in a uh, an undercover car. Nothing really goes on much on a Sunday morning, or we think doesn't. And I put them in an undercover car, see what they could get. This is six in the morning. By seven in the morning, they get that off the street. Loaded firearm, uh, gang member, um, obviously involved in illicit sales of drugs. It's fentanyl. It's killing our uh, our country. And um, now, if you show this. Picture of what we got off the street on a Sunday morning, you put that on social media and said. And with a caption saying, this is what we're doing for this community to keep this community safe. Does that help? Does that at least help the community start to feel a sense that there's people, there's guardians out there keeping us safe? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Three hours later, same people, same purpose statement, completely different act. They find out that there's a a set of, or there's triplet girls in our community, eleven year old girls that are having their eleven year old, uh, eleven year birthday. And they decide on their own, I didn't tell them to do this, but they decide on their own, hey, let's go buy some flour for these girls. Let's get our entire patrol team together, and we're gonna drive through. Uh, with our patrol units, and over the loudspeaker, we're gonna play the uh, the Beatles Happy Birthday song. And then we come out and and everyone's gonna be like, hey, what what's going on here? And they hand, and they hand the uh. The flower bouquet to these kids. Do you think those eleven year old girls felt safe and valued in that moment? How about the community that comes out and watches that and the family members that are watching that? Two different acts, same purpose statement. That's how powerful that becomes. And if you called any one of them, if you could seriously, if you called a member of my team right now, if you called Emmanuel or Lily right now, and you said, why do you guys do what you do? They would say exactly that. And then if you ask them this follow up. Why, why do you? You know, wh- why or how do you know that? They'd first joke and say, well, because Jim makes us say it over and over and over again. And that's partially true. But what they would really say is, we believe this. We believe it. We own this. We own this. We created this. So we went from ninety seven words to something like this. Seven simple words, idealistic and true. And it's something that conjures up an emotion and a feeling. One last thing I wanna bring up is if if this team decides to go down this road, is another great way to start thinking about it. Is in the movie industry, there's a uh, a thing that's called the setup. If you've watched any uh, good, like if when you walk out the movie theater and you see the movie posters uh, of of the upcoming movies, there always, there's always like a setup. That describes pretty much the key um, tagline of the movie, basically. Anybody see this movie Cinderella Man? If you haven't run, don't walk to see this movie. It is a great, great movie. It's one of the greatest true story comebacks of of a boxer. Jim J. Braddock back in the nineteen, in the depression period. And uh. Here was the setup for for this particular movie. It said, when America was on its knees, so there's the problem. Here's the problem for America right now. Set up with a problem. When America's on its knees. He brought us to our feet. That is a great way to start thinking of um. Of creating your own purpose statement is to start with a setup. Here's my organization. Here's the problem. The problem is far too many teams are unhealthy and disengage, is just, far too many teams are unhealthy and disengaged. That's the problem. That's the problem in the workplace. That's a problem among teams and boards and commissions, no matter what. That's the problem out there. At least as I see it and what the research and science seems to support on that. Um, so what's the solution? Here's the solution. We build strong, healthy and purpose driven teams. That's why we pop our heads off the morning, or off the pillow every day, is to go fight that enemy of disengagement. And we go build strong, healthy and purpose driven teams, that that enemy can't attack. Here's a police department that uh, I worked with uh, recently. They said, you know, what their setup, what they figured out, say, hey, what's our problem? What's our setup? What's the problem? And they said, hey, portions of the city are fractured, and they were a brand new police department. They were starting from the ground up. And so they had all their officers were laterals. They weren't, you know, people that you just got fresh out of the academy. These all had to be experienced police officers. So portions of the city were fractured, some portions of the city viewed themselves as better and separate than others. But then also you had officers laterling from other organizations that came from very broken and uh, unhealthy cultures, and they didn't want that to be a part of. Who they are. They didn't want them bringing their problems into this newly created organization. And so here's their purpose statement that they came up with. Here's the solution. We deliver an experience where people feel unified, engaged and safe. Would you wanna work for a city like, or would you wanna live in a city like that where that is what the police department is delivering? I would. That that's a, that's, and if people are living that and believing it, and they got us splattered out everywhere. And they say it, in fact, when they went live as a police department, they were actually chanting that before they went live. At like midnight. It was awesome. It was awesome to see them do that because they were excited. You can apply this to your families. So what we said, like, for example, I'll give you an example. Here's, here's our family purpose statement. Far too many families suffer from generations of emotional and spiritual brokenness and unhealthiness. That's as our family, we said, that's the problem as we see it. That's our setup. And so what we said is, well, we're gonna build strong, healthy, we're gonna build a strong, healthy and faith centered genera- family for generations to come. Not just for for us right now, but for my kids and their kids and their kids' kids. Because that's, that's how we're thinking. We're thinking the long game. And every time one of uh, myself, if I screw up with one of my kids and my wife sees it. And I do, and I do something that uh, didn't make them feel strong or healthy. What do you think my wife is, uh, what do you think she's doing uh, with me? Do you think she's pointing at this and saying, hey, no, 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 this is what we believe? And every time one of my kids mess up, and like, you know, for example, my son says something snotty to his older sister. Hey, is this making this family strong, healthy and what we said, what we're supposed to be all about? I can bring back their behavior. I can align their behavior, and mine gets aligned around it and held accountable to it, too. So then finally, the last thing that you wanna be, once you get a purpose statement, once you've get it, then the only job you have to do at this point is to become a CRO. What do I mean by that? So in our organizations, we've got CEOs, chief executive officers, chief operating officers, we've got chief information officers, chief financial officers. So we got those, and those are important people, but what we need people to do, what we need leaders to do and team members to do is to become the chief reminding officer. Because people will forget. The reason why I have to say that over and over and over again with my team is they'll forget. Nobody even believes that you believe what you're saying, what the research shows, is you've gotta say it at least seven times. That's just the minimum for you to believe that I believe what I'm saying. So I'm not saying stop at seven. We've gotta say it over and over and over again. It should be infused in everything that we do, when we reward, when we recognize, all those things. So, this is my call to action for this board, for this commission. Build a team purpose statement. Build a team purpose statement that keeps this team that is going to change. Mister uh, Rosati, I believe you've probably been on the board maybe the longest. Okay, quite a few years, yeah, I think. Twelve years, yeah. But wouldn't it be really cool that despite the changing board, that no matter who, the different folks that came on board. That we still had the same purpose that we stayed aligned with, and it guided every decision that we made. Every direction that we decided to go, uh, every decision that we made as a board, that that would be our guiding purpose statement. That's my call to action for this board. There's my contact information. You all have it there. Feel free to follow me on on LinkedIn or break or on on Instagram. I promise you this. Number one, I will never post anything political, and number two, I'll never post anything negative. I'm only gonna post things that are gonna add leadership value. Um, to your professional and to your pro- personal life as well. So um, you also have two handouts here that pretty much succinctly describe everything that we went over. Um, that's basically on this handout here. I really wanna invite and encourage this board to just be the guides. Be the guides in this story that uh, that this community really, really needs. Um, which remember, harkening back to those traits and characteristics, they're humble. It's about the heroes. It's about everyone else. They're wise, they're empathetic, they have a heart for people. And bring that in every single thing that you do as a team and as a board and as a commission. You will be hitting it out of the park, and you will be living out something that's extremely purpose driven. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now is the time for reports from city staff. Are there any reports?
Uh, there are no reports.
Uh, approval of the minutes, can we get a motion for that?
Where's the motion? I approve, uh, I motioned to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, I second that.
Board member Wick.
I'm gonna abstain since I was not on the board at that time.
Uh, board member Elric.
Yes.
Chairman Rosati?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Planning board members may introduce. New items for discussion, but no action may take place except to put it on the future agenda. Do any planning board members have anything to introduce? Mister Elric.
Um, I was wondering if staff can look at the commercial equestrian district or um, zoning of Glendale. And see if we can implement something similar in the Rancho.
Well, we do have the the Rancho master plan coming to council soon, I believe.
Yes, there's, there's part of the agreement, settlement agreement where council will be looking at um, potentially an update. To the Rancho master plan, but maybe. For uh, board member Elric, I think if the, uh, there's a couple of things. One is. Whether it's something that comes back to the board, which an an update to the plan would. But maybe without putting words in your mouth, if it was, as we go through, look at updating the Rancho master plan to look at. Uh, the commercial equestrian zoning in Glendale as a possible um, zoning, land use that could be considered in an update? Is that, okay, perfect. We will do so. Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Now is the time for city planner comments. Any comments from the city planner?
Yes, and I won't, I know you guys sat through uh, two items, so thank you. I wanna welcome Samantha. Board member Wick to the uh, board. Thank you. Not only because uh, we needed you for a quorum today, but more so. But tha- that's, that's one thing, but the important thing is that uh, you know, in meeting with her earlier. And uh, just, you know, kind of uh, understanding her perspective and looking at things, uh, it's gonna be a, you're gonna. Be a nice compliment to the team that exists. I know we have two team members uh, missing today, but um, we're really happy to have you. On on the team and uh, to kind of steal some of Jim Oul's uh, concepts. I think you more are guides. And Sherpas than we are. We we just happen to kind of tag along for the ride, but one thing I will say, um, and this is not a sales pitch for for Jim. But uh, we've done similar trainings where we actually go through and develop a purpose statement, and I think some of you have probably heard. Uh, it when we say that we seek to work with the community to build a safe, beautiful, uh. Work together to build a safe, beautiful and thriving community. So you'll hear those words uh, every once in a while in a staff report. And uh, we kind of uh, are chief reminding officers within planning on our purpose statement and why we're here. And I I will say, whether, you know, whether there's different purpose statements for different groups. Uh, having one uh, and having a North Star with which to focus and having a why. Which you all have, you're probably personally driven by those whys. Uh, helps you to kind of, as he says, get up out of bed and do the work. And I think what you guys have done. Uh, and what you continue to do day in, day out, to hear the different opinions and the different. Uh, perspectives from the community when an item is brought forth, uh, is really important. I mean, it's, it's more important than the the work that staff does because what you do is you help to guide those, guide uh, people through a process. Uh, and in many instances, when we do large civic engagement like specific plans, you are also a soundboard for the community. So that they can hear that you're hearing them and then translate that into feedback to staff so that eventually. When a long range planning document is prepared, and that goes forward to council, the council is is well aware that the board did its job, right? The duties. You looked at land use decisions, you uh, evaluated all the pros and cons, looked at the code. And combined all that information and eventually made a a a decision that was vetted, that was considered, and you took everything into consideration. And at the same time, while doing all that, you showed empathy for people and the situations and the different perspectives. So I think when we take all that together. Um, you guys are a lot further along in the effort, even though it was a a good thing to kind of hear the process. Through Jim's voice, but really, um, you guys are a lot further along in that effort, and I thought for me, it just kind of was a good reminder of. A thing we did collaboratively with the diff- with the department and key members of the department, the executive team has done something similar. I believe council's done that also. So it was good to kind of get that perspective and, like I said, whatever you gleam, anything, anything can be positive. You can glean components out of it. Uh, that can be positive, but one thing that really, in my mind, when I, when I consider the board is just the very important work that you do day in and day out. To help to build that safe, beautiful and thriving community. So that's something to be commended uh, of you all, and we thank you. And as we get. Close to the holidays, I know we're gonna see each other again, but uh, I think, like I said, I I commend you. I thank you for your effort and for the members of the public. Uh, what you saw tonight was really, uh, even though it was only three out of five board members, but the deliberation and the consideration. Uh, and the clarity of purpose and the final decision, I think is something, regardless of what side of the equation you fell. On that vote is something that the board did its job. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now adjourn the planning board meeting on Monday, December twelfth, twenty twenty two at six P M in the. Name of Matthew Pavelka, fallen Burbank police officer nineteen years ago. May we never. Forget Matthew Pavelka. The planning board meeting of December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two is canceled. This meeting will be held in person in the city council chambers at two seven five East Olive Avenue. The Burbank. Uh, is invited to attend the meeting in person or view the meeting online television. Public will be able to provide public comment in the following ways. In person, at the time of the next meeting, by leaving an e-comment or by calling eight one eight.